Thank you, and welcome to the monthly meeting of the Cobb County Planning Commission. This board is an advisory board to the Board of Commissioners. We make only recommendations to them after we investigate all the cases and hear all the relevant testimony. But the Board of Commissioners makes a final decision, and their next scheduled meeting is December fifteenth. Before we get started, as is our tradition, I'm going to ask Pastor Matt Carver to come up and lead us in our invocation. He's from the Burnt Hickory Church of Christ. And then we'll have the pledge allegiance given by Tim Pierce, one of our Cobb County staff members. Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful this morning for your kind providence in bringing each one here to discuss and deliberate the affairs of this city. We honor you as the head of these proceedings. We honor you as the one who sustains and provides all that we have. We thank you for your many benefits. We thank you for the evidence of your presence all around us. Today, I specifically ask blessings upon the women and men who are serving upon this board. I ask a blessing of wisdom, of good judgment, and sound discernment as they deliberate over the affairs that are being brought before them today. We pray that you would supply them insight. We pray that you would supply them clarity in their thoughts and in their vision for this city, that they would serve well, the members of this community, that they would serve with wisdom, with sound reasoning, and even with compassion. We thank you for the privilege and the honor that comes with these meetings, and we ask that you would bless all in attendance with your favor today. In the name of Jesus, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you Pastor Carver and Mr. Pierce. With that, I'm going to turn this over to our John Peterson, our zoning division manager, to tell everybody how the proceedings are going to work today.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman of the Board. Today's hearing will be conducted both in person and virtually. For the in-person folks here today, we're going to ask that you stand and raise your hand if you're opposed or support a case. For those that are participating virtually, here's the following procedure for that. If you want to oppose a case, in your Q and A box, in your online form, you'd want to write in OPP, then the case number. For instance, it would be Z-73. And then you want to also, if you want to speak, you would want to punch in OPP to oppose it, the case number, Z-73, and then type in the word "speak." So that would let us know that you're opposed to that case and you want to speak. For those here who also want to support a case virtually, the process would be very similar. You would type in SUP to support, then the case number, Z-73. And then if you also want to make comments on it, you would type in the word "speak" after that. So if you wanted to support a resoning case, Z-73, you would punch in SUP, Z-73, speak. We ask that when you, it's your turn to speak, that your mic will be unmuted. Please state your name and where you live, and please affirm that you've been sworn in to present testimony to the board. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When each case is called, we ask that the applicant stand and signify that they are in attendance. Then after that, we're going to call for any opposition here that are here in person to see, to get the opposition counted for the official record. We would also ask the opposition to stand and raise their hands so they could be counted for the record. After the recognizing of the applicant and any opposition, the applicant and any opposition will be asked to come forward, to be sworn in, so they can present testimony to the board. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case concerns. There's not a process to reserve your time or a rebuttal process, so you can convey your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if more than one person wishes to speak on a case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information twice. Then after the 10-minute presentation period from both sides, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. And after that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, continue, or hold the case at hand. There is one case on today's printed agenda which has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. That's the resoning case, Z-73, of 2020, John Ukaboo. That case was withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Additionally, there are four cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued and will not be heard today. First case is resoning case, Z-59, of 2020, Tamina A. Patwery. This case was continued by the staff until the February 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-59, 2020, will not be heard today. Resoning case, Z-61, of 2020, Green Line Partners LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the February 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-61 will not be heard today. Resoning case, Z-72, of 2020, North Point Ministries Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the February 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-72, 2020, will not be heard today. And lastly, on the printed agenda, ROD 1, of 2020, Atlantic Realty Acquisitions LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the February 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So ROD number 1, of 2020, will not be heard today. Mr. Chairman of the Board, we did get a letter concerning one more resoning case that's on your agenda. The applicant would like to continue resoning case, Z-39, KO Management Incorporated, until your February 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. And the applicant is present, Mr. Chairman of the Board, if you have any questions, but they would like to continue that case.
Okay, thank you, John. And that's the case I'm handling. The applicant, as is indicated, they guarantee that they will have everything to us in time for the February hearing. So I'm going to hold them to that guarantee if he doesn't make it. But we'll, there's nobody here opposed to it, I don't believe, is there, at this point? So with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we continue Z-39 till our February hearing. Second from Judy, all in favor, raise your hand, and that passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume off on your cell phone, as the ringing does interfere with the broadcasting presentations. And any person wishes to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement. If within two years of immediately proceeding the filing of a resoning application, a contribution totaling $250 or more is made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information about this requirement is located on the table in the back of this room. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party, that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted to this board after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to start the consent agenda. And before I start reading the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman of the Board, there are three cases on today's printed consent agenda in which there is opposition here. So I'm just going to delete those off the consent agenda, and we're just going to put them on the regular agenda in a regular order.
Okay.
And the cases that we're not going to hear that are on consent on the consent agenda are resoning case, Z-65, of 2020, Christopher McMillan. Resoning case, Z-70, of 2020, CS Realty Group LLC. And the resoning case, Z-71, of 2020, David Pearson Communities Incorporated. These three cases will be moved to the consent agenda to the regular agenda, and they will just be heard in their regular numerical order.
Okay, thank you, John.
And that, Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing consent agenda for December 1st, 2020. First case on consent is resoning case, Z-53, Revive Land Group LLC. Request rezoning from O and I to RM8 for townhomes attached in landlot 389 of the 18th district. The property is located on the north side of Mapleton Parkway, the east side of Dodger Road, and the west side of Bonanza Trail. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. Number one, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated November 24, 2020. Number two, site plan marked Exhibit A, which is attached to the letter dated November 24, 2020. Number three, stormwater management comments. Number four, water and sewer comments. And number five, Department of Transportation comments. The applicant is present, and there is no one here in, is there anyone here in person opposing the resoning case, Z-53?
No.
Let the record show there's no one here in person opposing the zoning case, and there's also no one here virtually opposing this rezoning case. Resoning case, Z-66, Value Plus Development LLC. Request rezoning from R-80 to R-15 for a single-family house in landlot 2930 of the 19th district. The property is located on the north side of Old Dallas Road and on the south side of Dallas Highway, east of Ellis Preserve Lane. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on September 25, 2020, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, variance as detailed in the zoning comments. Number three, stormwater management division comments or recommendations. Number four, water and sewer division comments or recommendations. And number five, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is there anyone here opposed to the rezoning case, Z-66?
No.
No. Let the record show there's no one here in person or virtually opposed to the rezoning case, Z-66. Resoning case, Z-68, Related Development LLC. Request rezoning from CRC to RRC for multifamily residential in landlots 578 of the 16th district. The property is located at the northern terminus of Cobb Place Lane on the east side of Interstate 75. Staff recommends approval to the RRC zoning district subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on October 1st, 2020, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Garvis L. Samms Jr., dated November 4, 2020. Number three, variances as detailed in the zoning comments. Number four, fire department comments or recommendations. Number five, stormwater management division comments or recommendations. Number six, water and sewer division comments or recommendations. And number seven, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here in person opposed to the rezoning case, Z-68?
No.
Mr. Chairman of the Board, there's no one here opposed in person to the rezoning case, Z-68. However, we do have someone from the school board who's opposed to the rezoning case, Z-68. And is it the will of the board to hear what Mr. Spraberry has to say before we vote on this?
Yes, yeah, but let's leave it on the consent agenda and just let, we pretty much know what he's going to say, so.
Okay, can you unmute Mr. Spraberry real quick?
Um, yes, Charles Spraberry?
Yes.
Charles, it's your turn to speak.
And I know you're going to say something too.
Yes, good morning, this is Charles Spraberry with the Cobb County School District, and I appreciate your time, Mr. Chairman, and, excuse me, and the Planning Commission. Approval of this petition will cause concern for CCSD, as it will result in an impact on enrollment schools already over capacity, specifically Bell's Ferry Elementary School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Charles.
So we'll just note that he virtually called into oppose it with his prepared statement. Okay, next case is rezoning case, Z-69, 2020, SK Commercial Realty and Golden Rock Companies. Request a rezoning from O and I in GC to RRC for a mixed-use development, which is a mixture of retail, office, hotel, and multifamily residential in landlots 914, 915, 945, and 946 of the 17th district. The property is located on the south side of Circle 75 Parkway and on the southwest side of I-75, northeast of Cobb Parkway, northwest of I-285. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on October 1st, 2020, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, a letter from Mr. James A. Valley dated November 23rd, 2020. Number three, variances as detailed in the zoning comments. Number four, fire department comments or recommendations. Number five, stormwater management division comments or recommendations. Number six, water and sewer comments or recommendations. And number seven, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here in person opposed to the rezoning case, Z-69? There is no one here in person. And Mr. Chairman of the Board, Mr. Spraberry is also, has an opposition for this zoning case? Would the board like to hear his comments also?
Yes, please.
All right.
Okay. Charles Spraberry?
Again, good morning, this is Charles Spraberry with the Cobb County School District. Approval of this petition will cause concern for CCSD, as it will result in an impact on enrollment of schools already over capacity, specifically East Cobb Middle School. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles.
Okay. Resoning case, Z-74, 2020, Hawaii Young. Request a rezoning from NS to NRC for the purpose of a daycare in landlots 310 and 339 of the 16th district. The property is located on the south side of Shalford Road, west of Tricken Road. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on October 1st, 2020, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, stormwater management division comments or recommendations. Number three, water and sewer comments or recommendations. And number four, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. Is there anyone here opposed to the rezoning case, Z-74?
No.
Let the record show there's no one here in person or virtually opposed to the rezoning case, Z-74. Moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. LUP 20, Open Arms Group Home, request a temporary land use permit renewal for the purpose of a group home in landlots 1272 of the 19th district. The property is located on the west side of Lindsay Drive, south of Jamestown Drive. Staff recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, no more than six DFAX clients living on site. And number two, no parking in the right of way. Is there anyone here in person opposed to LUP 20?
No.
Let the record show there's no one here either in person or virtually opposed to LUP 20, 2020. And moving into special land use permits on the consent agenda. SLEP 12, of 2020, the Stonehaven School, request a special land use permit for the purpose of a school in landlot 281 of the 17th district. The property is located on the west side of Joiner Avenue and on the north side of Barbara Road. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on October 1st, 2020, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, fire department comments or recommendations. And number three, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. Is there anyone here in person opposed to SLEP 12?
No.
Let the record show there's no one here either in person or virtually opposed to SLEP 12, 2020. And that completes the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman of the Board.
Okay, thank you, John. Before we have a motion, does anybody want to add anything to the stipulations or comment on those cases?
I do, on SLEP 12. John, if we could make that subject to a stacking plan to be approved before COs are issued on the building.
Okay.
Okay, Tony?
Yes, on Z-69, regarding staff comments and variances, we'd like to delete the variance for minimum side yard setback. Side yard setback shall be 15 feet. And delete the variance request for minimum driveway setback shall be 20 feet, subject to parking and DOT approval.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Fred?
All right, on, in District 1, and Z-66, Value Plus Development. First, I want to make clear that the staff did recommend deletion to R-20, contrary to what the applicant sought, and so this approval is to, is subject to that deletion to R-20. The staff calculated the lot size as 20,002 square feet. I calculated it to be just a few square feet shorter than 20,000 square feet, in which case, I'd like the record to reflect a variance is granted provided there's at least a 19,000 square foot lot such that this, a single-family home can be built on this property. A variance was specifically requested to reduce the front yard setback from 35 feet to 28 feet, and I want the record to be clear that that variance is approved. To the extent any implied variance was requested regarding the height of the structure or the number of stories, there was no express request for such a variance and none is granted. And please let the record also reflect that I have recused myself from all discussions regarding...
Z-69?
Z-69, in District 2. Thank you.
Okay, and then I'm going to add a couple here. On LUP 20, I'm just going to add that all stipulations from previous land use permits apply where not in conflict. And then on Z-53, we're going to add that the Mapleton Parkway design guidelines shall apply to the Mapleton Parkway frontage, and that the front elevation of each building shall have at least 50% brick or stacked stone. And that's all I have, is all everybody else has.
So I'll make a...
Okay, go ahead and make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Okay. And then, yeah, and Fred has a comment on one of the cases?
Actually, too, again, please, please show that I refrain from voting by virtue of recusal on Z-69. And as to Z-68, I believe it is, Related Development, I raised several concerns at the Planning Commission meeting. I understand that these are difficult times for folks in retail, and there's, there is a movement, a path out of the wilderness, if you will, for that retail to try to go to mixed use, including residential. I do understand that. In this case, my concerns arose due to the variance request shown at page 228 of our planning book, and due to the failure of the plan to meet the tree standards, or at least as noted by staff at page 230, that my concern was just that this request was overboard in terms of its density. And thus, I wish to reflect a no vote to, on those limited grounds.
Okay, anything else? With that, let's call the question. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda? Raise your hand, and you're in favor of everything other than the two cases mentioned? Yes. Okay. So with that, we'll reflect, the consent agenda is approved, five to zero, except for on Z-68, with Fred opposing that, and on Z-69, with Fred recusing from that case. With that, what's next on our agenda, John?
Okay, and all those folks that were approved on the consent agenda, you're free to go. Just come back in two weeks for the Board of Commissioners' hearing on December the 15th. And moving into the continued case agenda, first case is rezoning case, Z-13, 2020, Arturo Martinez. Request a rezoning from PSC to NRC for the purpose of a church in landlot 190 of the 18th district. The property is located at the southwest intersection of Mapleton Parkway and Boggs Road. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here in person opposed to the rezoning case, Z-13, of 2020? Let the record show there's no one here opposed in person to the rezoning case, Z-13. Okay, there's no one here opposed to this rezoning case, either in person or virtually. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
I'm here representing Arturo Martinez and Rock of Salvation Church.
Okay, could you give us your name for the record?
Chris Redman with Artifacts LLC.
Okay, and whenever you're ready, just go ahead, tell us what you...
Just wanted to give a brief update of why we're here today. We've filed a couple of letters of continuance, working with the church in regard to budget and design to accommodate. We've made some pretty significant changes in regard to updating the exterior and the footprint to align with the design guidelines, as well with the budget that we're working with, with the church, to come up with more of a satisfying design for the church, and I believe for the county, in terms of site development and planning and the architectural aspect with the exterior elevations.
Okay, and, you know, you didn't bring elevations or anything today, did you, to show?
I do have some large, large scale, large print. I didn't know whether...
They may be too large if they're the big...
I have 11 by 17 as well.
Okay, he can project those, just so everybody can see what we're talking about. Show off all your good work.
We've submitted both the master plan and identification of Phase 1. The church, based on budget and timeline, we plan on doing this project in phases. We're calling them Phase 1, 2, and 3. What you see on the screen would be all phases comprehensive. Phase 1 would be to the right elevation, the addition of a fellowship hall, and then Phase 3 would be an extension of the sanctuary to the left-hand side elevation.
Okay.
We have a combination of brick and cultured stone and hard-coated stucco for the facade, and for a portion on the right and left-hand side, making provision for the additions in the future.
Good, good, okay. Do you have anything else you want to tell us right now, or...
Just in regard to our discussion previously, you know, to make benefit, of course, when we typically do a initial phase of Phase 1, we'll do part of what we would call Phase 2, in terms of the foundation and the slab for that, but we're going to plan to make use of that slab for a playground area, to put a soft surface, a playground, and a screening of, you know, conifers around the perimeter. and a screening of, you know, conifers around the perimeter privacy for the children, but also to, you know, increase the effect and the appeal, you know, of that elevation from Boggs Road.
Okay. Let's see, anything else right now, or...
No.
Okay, just to double check, there's no opposition? Not seeing or hearing any? I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing, and then it's back to us, and I'll ask you a couple of questions.
Okay.
Okay, now, as far as the playground, there was also talk about a permanent playground once you get Phase Two done. Did you have more discussions with the church on that? You talked about possibly moving some parking and...
Yes, absolutely. I've also spoken with a civil engineer that's present. We feel that we have more than enough parking to accommodate the facility, and we have some space on the property to be able to move some parking around, manipulating the grade, because there are some low areas and high areas, and we're looking at leveling out, you know, to where we've got, you know, a surmountable amount of area that we can, you know, create some space adjacent to the children's area and nursery, yes.
Okay, then we talked about on, when you do Phase One, rather than doing all the brick and stone and all of that on the, what you have is the right elevation of the product, you wanted to leave it more basic, so that you didn't waste all that money when you built Phase Two. And we talked about there being maybe a five-year deadline on that to build Phase Two. Did you discuss that with the church?
I haven't had an opportunity to discuss that, but I'm sure the church would definitely be compliant, you know, with something like that. And just to give a vote of confidence, we just don't plan on just doing an inexpensive, you know, metal sheathing. You know, we plan on doing something, you know, with an architectural effect, you know, to add to the element, but that would be easily dismantled in regard to adding on for that additional phase.
Okay, okay, those are the big thing. And I think your stip letter, I just want to, and I'll probably clarify my stipulations. You intend to build the ten-foot multi-use trail along the Mabelton Parkway frontage, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Your stip letter referred to it as a sidewalk, and I just, I'll clear that up, but...
Yes, sir.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, with that, you can go ahead and have a seat.
All right, thank you.
I'll make a motion. With regard to Z thirteen, I recommend approval, subject to all the following. Stipulation, letter dated November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, from Chris Redman. All staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. The site plan received November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, with the following modifications. Adjustments necessary to accommodate the ten-foot wide multi-use trail with the three-foot wide grass strip along the Mabelton Parkway frontage. A twenty-foot landscape buffer to be added to the western property line. Adjustments to add a playground. Parking spaces may be moved, and that would probably be to the southern portion of the lot, but parking spaces may be moved, but there shall be no reduction in the number of parking spaces. And the district commissioner to approve the final site plan. All existing curb cuts to be removed. Elevations received with the last revision date of November sixteenth, twenty-twenty. Applicant to construct the section of the ten-foot multi-use trail along Mabelton Parkway frontage, fee in lieu of construction only allowed if the multi-use trail is installed by DOT prior to the development of the site. If Phase Two is not completed within five years of receiving a certificate of occupancy for Phase One, the right elevation of Phase One shall have brick and/or stacked stone added to meet design guidelines. Applicant to provide heavy landscaping, to provide visual screening of the right elevation during Phase One. Landscaping to include plannings that are at least six feet in height at planning. Applicant may construct the foundation of Phase Two in conjunction with construction of Phase One. If the foundation is installed during Phase One, the screening requirement is still applicable. A landscape and architectural review committee shall be established to review and approve all landscaping, building color palette, and design during the plan review process. The committee shall be comprised of the applicant, a member of Mabelton Improvement Coalition, and a representative from Community Development Agency. The district commissioner may approve minor modifications, except for those that increase the overall building square footage, cause a reduction in the size of a buffer, increase the height of the building, change access to a different roadway, change that is in conflict with an express stipulation or condition of zoning, or requires a variance or violates Cobb County ordinance. And I'll also recommend this for the consent agenda for the Board of Commissioners. That's my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Not seeing any? I'll call the question. All in favor? And that carries five to zero for approval. Okay, what's next, John?
Okay. Rezoning case Z fifty-two of twenty-twenty, Carl Edward Dills, requests a rezoning from R twenty to LI for a sign shop in Land Lots five-oh-four and five-oh-five of the eighteenth district. The property is located on the south side of Six Flags Parkway, west of Queensbury Drive. Is the applicant present? Okay, the applicant is here via virtual participation. Is there anyone here in person opposed rezoning case Z fifty-two of twenty-twenty? There's no one here in person, Mr. Chairman and Board. There are two people here in opposition to rezoning case Z fifty-two, and there's one, well, there's both people who would like to speak in opposition. Well, pardon me. There's two people on the list, virtually. One is the applicant, and the other is the opposition who wishes to speak. So this time, I would ask the applicant to present their case to the Board of Commissioners.
Good morning, this is Rebecca Hurd and Angela Hughes with Gaskins, Representatives for Mr. Dills. Was there any case Z fifty-two?
Okay, thank you for being here. Go ahead and give us your presentation.
We just wanted basically to say that Mr. Dills is requesting quite a bit with this piece of property, but his intent is to really clean the property up, improve the overall appearance, and he really feels like he's come up with a very good plan to do that. So we are here to answer any questions that anyone may have about his proposed improvements.
Okay, do you want to tell us a little bit about what he proposes to do?
Well, currently, the site is, currently, one parcel of the property is Mr. Dills' existing business. He has purchased the adjacent property, which has an existing house and small gravel area on the property. He plans to demolish both of those houses and to take the existing warehouse space on his current property and expand that to include office space. He's providing ample turnaround space on the property for the larger delivery trucks that he has coming onto the property. Currently, that is a problem out on the roadway, getting those trucks in and out of the property. These improvements will address those issues. There shouldn't be any more issues out in the public right of way, getting trucks in and out of this property. He is providing additional parking for employees, and basically just cleaning up the appearance of the property.
Okay, anything else you want to tell us? You still have plenty of time.
The proposed plan does show a reduction in the required setback to the adjacent property, and this plan does, would require a variance on the parking requirements. But the type of business that Mr. Dills has doesn't, doesn't really have any drive-up business, so the parking that he needs for this property is basically for employees.
Okay, okay, anything else?
I believe that's it.
Okay, with that, we'll ask to hear from the opposition.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Sonya Wheatley with the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. Thank you for allowing the time to speak on this case. This plan, and I know it has been held for a while, there have been some changes. The Board of, the Mabelton Improvement Coalition Board, at this stage, we cannot recommend approval and instead would recommend denial. There is a significant number of problems with this property and this plan. To begin with, and I don't know if Carl can pull up the overhead for the adjoining property for four-forty, and take off the layering and zoom in. So this is looking to combine the two parcels in what is a priority industrial that abuts industrial behind. And while we completely understand and have no problem with that, there are a number of conditions that must be met to make this viable. It does abut residential, both existing, that could ultimately become industrial, as well as across the street, a property that is residential and could be redeveloped. This was kind of the first step for us in looking at this, and we've heard quite a bit about talking up and cleaning up the properties. We have concerns with the property at four-forty, and also, you know, and the condition of that. There seems to be quite a bit of junk. There is a building, that building to the south on the map, per code enforcement, there were significant stipulations for back, dating back into the eighties, that had to be completed in, as of ninety-one, and there was some code enforcement history about that. There's also some code enforcement history that that building may not have been permitted. And again, this is from Cobb County Code Enforcement and available to everyone on the record, so there are concerns with that. The site plan itself that was presented has six significant variances, and, you know, there's a long history of, you know, there are times when variances are required, but those are because there is, you know, an extreme need. There's a, there's a reason, not simply a request. As we see it right now, the buildings, building, buildings, however we look at it, simply are not sized appropriately to fit on this parcel and make it viable for adjacent uses. You can see three homes to the left. It's an enormous building, reducing a buffer adjacent to residential from fifty to ten feet. There's concern, this is not just employee parking, but there are a number of, and my understanding from speaking to Mr. Dills was that, and I may get the number wrong, I think it was forty-three foot trucks are coming and going into the property for the successful sign business, and we're glad that it's successful, would like to see it expand. We just need to see a good plan. So there not only needs to be parking, and that parking needs to be on hardened surfaces, not the gravel that's indicated on the site plan, but, you know, we need to make sure that there's safety in this turn on a hill for long trucks coming and going into the parcel. To kind of wrap it up, you know, the main issue with, with the current plan we have are the buff, are the request for variances, they're significant, and the building needs to fit the site. The site, you know, is what it is. It also appears that the building could be four stories, up to seventy feet, and again, that is next to residential. We have two curb cuts that are, that also require a variance. There's parking on gravel. The septic, I'll let county handle that, because that's more of an issue. And I would say that, you know, although this is the parcel that is in four-thirty-six, you know, this is a cohesive site plan that requires both parcels, in our opinion, be brought in, and a complete plan be made, to bring everything up to code, verify, and make sure that it all works. I think that's it. We, again, unfortunately, are requesting that you either deny or hold this until it can, that appropriate plan can be brought in. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonya. Okay, that's all the opposition, I believe? Okay, okay, but nobody else wants to speak. Okay. With that, I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing, and it's back to this board in this case I'm handling. First question, I have one for John. Did they come back and refile to add that second parcel into the rezoning request?
I don't believe they have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, because that's something I had discussed with them, and the reason, much for what Sonya said with that, is the fact that it really needs to be a cohesive plan. They're asking for very sizable reduction in buffers, and some of that may make sense if we can get some help for the people on the other side as well. In other words, instead of a fifty-foot buffer on one side, we do thirty on this side and twenty on the other side, to get some buffering for residents on both sides may, may make some sense. You know, I don't have much of an appetite for approving any variances on just this one single parcel. And if you look at it, I don't think it even meets minimum with the asked-to-be-zoned LI on its own, and then, you know, if you did, fifty percent of the parcel would be buffer. So, you know, that's some of the concerns, so the applicant will have to decide if they, you know, want to bring in that second parcel or not. I know it already has LI zoning, but they're not in compliance on that parcel right now. I don't believe with that building to the rear. And John, I'll ask you if you can investigate with building inspections, whether there was a permit issued for that rear building that needs setback variances? There seems to be some question on that, and they're requesting setback variances on, on that building, on their site plan, both to the side and rear setback, which maybe lends to the fact that maybe it was built without permits. You know, they're proposing to increase, tear down the two houses, and I think the small shed in front, but then build what would be a total of a twenty-one thousand square foot building, which is pretty large on this size parcel. They had calculated the parking spaces required at eighty. You know, I thought it would be seventy, based on, you know, one space per three hundred square feet on a twenty-one thousand square foot building, but they're only proposing nineteen, so, which is a huge reduction. And when we do zoning, we can't only consider what this applicant may be do, but as we know, you know, buildings don't stay with the same use forever typically, so we have to be prepared for what the next applicant may be. So that was one variance. It's just, I think, too extreme, and I think they could do some work and get, you know, some more park, striped parking spots on there if they worked on the site plan to accommodate a lot more. Reduce the side setback from twenty feet to fifteen feet on the eastern property line for that existing building. I would say that would probably be reasonable for the existing building only. And then they, one of their other variances was to request the rear setback be reduced from thirty feet to twenty-five feet. was to request the rear setback be reduced from 30 feet to 25 feet, uh, for the existing building and proposed new building. Uh, given that it backs up to industrial and, and that industrial building's fairly close as well, I think that one may be okay. Uh, but when we get to reduce the, the buffer to the western property line from 50 feet to 10 feet, that's, you know, too extreme. The residential house is only about 10 feet from the property line. So, you know, that 10 feet provides some very little protection and buffering from what's a fairly intense light industrial use. Uh, so, I had talked to the applicant about doing a 30-foot buffer on that side, and then flipping to the eastern side, which also bounds residential, and doing a 20-foot buffer, except for where the building is, and reducing the buffer to 10 feet where the building is, so that, you know, the people to the other side would have a little bit of protection as well. And I think that may be a good combination. Uh, let's see here. And then they had reduce the distance between driveways from the required 100 feet to 72.4. And, you know, with their current site plan, they don't have a deceleration lane or anything off of Six Flags Parkway, and they're going to have truck traffic all the time. Uh, I had asked them to make one driveway with a deceleration lane, uh, which would eliminate the need for that variance altogether. And that's what I think they, they should do. And then they asked for a variance, uh, to use septic on this commercial development, uh, because they say sewer's not available. But sewer is available, uh, according to the water system back in Delta Circle. And I'm also told that, that Cobb County requires sewer on all new commercial development. And the applicant's required to figure out how to get it there. They'll need an easement to get to Delta Circle, but it's not that far. It's the street right in behind the property. But, and I don't know where you'd put sewer on this property. I mean, retain a septic on this property anyway, because we're going to, I think it's 69% impervious coverage with the new plan, because they do actually, on the latest plan, show paving instead of gravel. Uh, one of the things they didn't do is any stormwater management that I saw on the plan. And they're, they're putting in far more than 5,000 square feet of new pavement, uh, which would trigger the requirement for stormwater. Uh, so, they think they need to address that. Uh, let's see, the sewer connection, stormwater. Talked about that. About that. So, I think I hit most of, of my concerns, you know, with the current proposal. I think, you know, 21,000 square feet may or may not be too big. It depends on if they can get, help meet the parking requirements. Think I could live with the building itself if they can get a good design, but it, I think it needs a lot more work. Uh, and a lot, and most of the things I brought up weren't addressed with this new site plan that we just received Wednesday. And late Wednesday at that. Uh, so, I guess if we can bring the applicant back on?
Yes, sorry, this is Rebecca and Angela Gaskins again.
Hey, Rebecca. Uh, I, hopefully you just heard all the comments I just made.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, let me ask you, would your preference be that, that, that we act on this today? Uh, which, in which case, my motion would be for denial. Or would your preference be that we hold it and let you work on it some more and come back in February?
Yes, sir, we would like to hold it.
Okay, that's all I need to know for now. Does anybody else have any questions before I do that? Okay. With that, I'll make a motion that we hold Z-52 till our February hearing. Okay, second from Alice. Any further discussion? Not seeing any. Call for the question. All in favor? Okay, so that carries five to zero to hold Z-52 till February. What's next, John?
Okay, rezoning case Z-54 of 2020, Galaxy Childers Land LLC, request rezoning from R-30 to R-15 for the purpose of single-family residential, uh, for a single-family residential subdivision, and land lots 28 and 51 of the first district. The property is located on the east side of Childers Road, directly across the terminus of Monet Drive. Um, is there anyone here in person opposed to rezoning case Z-54? Mr. Chairman, Board, there's three people here in person opposed to this rezoning case, and we have three people, or two people online opposed to this zoning case, uh, of which both of them would like to speak. Is the applicant present for the zoning case? All right, would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in to start presenting their case?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Melissa Perrinat with the law firm of Holtney, Zadkoff &amp; Wasserman, 100 Galleria Parkway, Suite 1800, Atlanta, Georgia. I'm here today with Harry Joseph, the President of Galaxy Partners, Inc., an experienced real estate and consulting and management firm, and I have the pleasure of representing the applicant today in connection with this application. Galaxy is seeking to redevelop, to develop a small infill subdivision in the East Cobb area, and connect, um, and in connection therewith is seeking to rezone the property at 3442 Childers Road from R-30 to R-15. This property is approximately 2.24 acres of undeveloped land, and it's located in the midst of many East Cobb residential subdivisions. And those have densities that are similar to the one that we are requesting here with respect to this property. The property is located on the east side of Childers Road at the intersection of Childers Drive and Monet Drive. The property is currently zoned R-30, which would allow three homes on the property. Galaxy is seeking a slight increase from that three, um, that three-home allowance for a cohesive subdivision of five homes. Galaxy's request is to rezone the property to R-15 to accomplish this, and we believe this is consistent with the surrounding subdivisions, um, and also the general nature of the development in the area. As background, Galaxy's original plan was for six homes. But after meeting and working with the Planning Commission, with staff, and with neighboring, and with the neighboring subdivisions, um, we've taken all of the comments and concerns to heart and have worked hard and diligently to redesign and rework this site plan so that it meets all of the needs of everyone surrounding. So, today, we are here seeking a rezoning request for five lots on this property. And you can see the site plan that we have recently redesigned, reflecting those, those five homes on the property. Again, we believe this rezoning request is consistent with Cobb County zoning ordinance and the future land use map. Um, the allowable maximum density for this property would be 2.5 acres, uh, units per acre, and Galaxy's new design reflects only 2.23 units per acre. Each of the proposed lots exceeds 15,000 square feet, and that does not include the private road, um, portion of the subdivision. With respect to the private road, Galaxy, Galaxy has redesigned its initial concept of a cul-de-sac road to provide for a private hammerhead-shaped road. This change will reduce anticipated impervious surfaces, um, and it has allowed Galaxy to increase lot sizes outside of the private road. Additionally, we believe this private road concept has been used in other subdivisions nearby with success. Galaxy's redesign and reworking of its site plan has allowed Galaxy to proceed with this rezoning without the need for any variances at this time. Um, in its original requests, there were several variances requested for setbacks, um, but those are no longer required with respect to the five-lot design. As with many infill developments, Galaxy has been working with the county to ensure that its drainage plan and stormwater connection plan work not only for this new subdivision, but also for the neighboring subdivisions and the overall, overall goals of the county. Pending county approval, Galaxy has come up with a sanitary sewer solution where it will not need any private easements to connect to sanitary sewer services, as we have determined that it is possible to connect to sanitary sewer inlets across Childers Road. The stormwater drainage plan is currently being resized based on the reduction from six lots to five, um, but the concept will be similar to the one originally submitted, um, to, to the county. We understand that the most recent stormwater drainage plan, um, has been conceptually approved by the county stormwater engineer as well. Uh, we have determined that the stormwater plan will reduce the existing sheet flow, um, so the prior, the current prior-to-development sheet flow to, um, the Coventry Green neighbors by 20 to 40%, depending on the particular lot position and the placement of the, where you're measuring. Um, and that's after accounting for increased impervious areas, um, once the homes are constructed. The site plan and related development plans have evolved quite a bit since we submitted the application. And we believe that this evolution has been a direct benefit of the neighboring subdivisions, the county, and the overall development as a whole. As evidenced by the work here, Galaxy's embraced a concern to the county and its neighbors, um, and it didn't want to, to abandon the opportunity for a quality infill cohesive subdivision in this location. Um, we truly want this development to enhance East Cobb and be beneficial to the surrounding neighborhoods. Um, and we'll, uh, answer any questions, um, once we finish with the opposition.
Okay, thank you. I think that was only speaker in favor, so we'll go to the opposition now. Let's, let's do one in person and just switch back and forth. I think there were, what, three in person and two online? Yeah, so let's do that. So, let's... Have you been sworn in?
I have not.
Okay, let's, let's get, everybody who wants to speak sworn in. Okay, tell us your name for the record.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Robert Stein. I'm, I'm going to leave my mask on, I think.
Okay, that's fine. And there's some sanitizer and things up there. If you feel comfortable, if you want to wipe or anything first, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I'm a, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Lizeken Johansson, and I'm here representing the Coventry Green Homeowners Association. If I, if we could, Lisa Moore Shower, uh, a, a board representative, uh, is one of the speakers online, wanted to do a brief opening before I spoke, if that's acceptable, Mr. Chairman, and then I would speak.
I guess we could do that. Okay, so...
You are unmuted.
Okay, and let's make this Lisa's full speech, or...
That's the plan.
Can you hear me?
Now we can. State your...
Okay, good. Um, hi, everybody. My name is Lisa Moore Shower. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Berman Fink Van Horn. And, um, I actually live in the Coventry Green subdivision, and I have served as the Vice President of the Board in the past. And I'm currently, um, engaged to be the Board's Representative before you today. And, um, due to the location of where my house is located, my property will be impacted by the development, because my fence line, the corner of my property, is 17 to 18 feet approximately off the property line of their property, of the subject property. And, um, and then there's, the way that the site plan that's being proposed, um, has the home that's lot number two, that home, the setback line is only 10 feet off the property line, which means that, that a home could theoretically be, be built 27 feet away from my property line. And, and we, the Homeowners Association opposes this application because of the density, which Rob's going to talk about further today, and also because of the water runoff, significant amount of water runoff onto the property, um, in Coventry Green. And we have not seen a new plan in regard to this revised site plan, showing how the water is going to be managed and maintained. And there is another issue as far as the fact that they're using a private road. And I know that Ms. Perrinat said that it was, um, that private roads were being used around the, the community, but that is not true. There's not a private road community that we're aware of up and down Childers Road. So, this property is being designed to look to, completely different than all of the other surrounding properties, including Coventry Green, Tiffany Place across the street, Ellenwood right next door to this property, um, and all of the new divisions, subdivisions up the street, Cambridge Approach and Childers Walk as well. None of them are using a private road, and the density, um, that comes out of the use of a private road for this site plan is higher than the density which would, uh, come out of it. Well, actually, if they were using a public road, the density, density would be higher. But because they're using a private road, they're, they're, uh, using private roads specifically to reduce the density impact. Um, so, the application does not meet the rezoning criteria set out in the Cobb County Code Section 134-122, specifically number one, number two, um, and, uh, number four and five, in regard to the fact that it is not a, um, use that is, uh, suitable to the development of the adjacent and nearby properties, and does not, um, resemble the traditional layout and character of the neighboring properties. I'm going to turn it over to Rob now for his, um, argument and evidence. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and to pick up what, what Lisa was speaking about, the zoning application, uh, one of the three criteria that's settled in zoning ordinance that it doesn't conform to is the policy and intent of the land use plan. Land and people share an important quality. Both are defined by their character. Webster's Dictionary defines character as attributes that make up and distinguish an individual or a place. Cobb County wants this commission to protect the character of the area that surrounds the parcel that the applicant wants to rezone. The Cobb County Comprehensive Plan addresses character twice. First, it says, "Where new growth occurs, it must be done in a manner to preserve and protect existing stable neighborhoods and community character." Second, it tells us that new residential uses should be developed in a manner that helps protect the character of existing areas. This application is currently filed does not protect the character of this portion of Cobb County. Five homes for this small parcel is too dense and too intense for this area. This proposal is more dense than Coventry Green, and to the extent of our research is at the top of, or really exceeds the density of all other subdivisions in this area. Now, it may be that this high density allows the applicant to develop the land at its highest and most profitable use, but that, of course, is not what they are entitled to do under law. Our Georgia courts have said that developers are entitled to a reasonable economic use, not the most profitable use. This parcel in this area is in the LDR Low Density Residential category, and as stated by the applicant's attorney, this provides a density range for you to consider, a range of 1.0 to 2.5 units to the acre. In making your decision, the Comprehensive Plan states that factors such as the tract size are to be considered. The Comprehensive Plan also states that the goal is to provide compatibility with adjacent residential uses, and to make sure that proposals, which are at the high end, and this is at or above the high end of the range, do not adversely affect the stability of the existing residential areas. And I'll talk more about this. Coventry Green hired Ingenium Engineering to help with an evaluation of the applicant's site plan. We asked them to do an apples-to-apples density comparison to Coventry Green and many other subdivisions in the area. Um, if, uh, if I could, I've sent this in, but I'll also, just, if we could put this up. This, uh, this site plan, um, has five lots. This, this site plan has five lots, but it has a street as an easement across the lots. And while the lots appear bigger, they are really not as large because a slice of each lot is being used for the street. Private streets such as this were rejected by the Cobb Board of Commissioners in Z92, a case, a 2015 case for another subdivision nearby on Childers Road. So this, this exact type of request for private streets has been rejected for this In this version of the site plan, Ingenium engineers, our engineers, have shown what it would look like to accommodate public, public streets and rights of way. You can see the proposal becomes way too dense. The applicant has to eliminate important character elements such as public streets because of their density. The Cobb zoning ordinance for the R15 developments, when you're seeking to rezone R15, says that you should design and build to ensure intensity and density compatibility with adjacent single-family detached dwellings. This will not be at that density level, and I'll cover that further in a second. We then asked the engineers to calculate the true density if the applicant created public streets to match the character of other subdivisions. And in this chart, which I'd also sent in, the, let me put this up. The density with public roads would be approximately 2.71 units to the acre, according to the Ingenium engineer calculation. The engineers compiled the densities of various area subdivisions. The average density for area subdivisions is 1.88 lots per acre. The applicant calculates the development at 2.23 lots per acre with private streets, but you can see if you take off the blinders and recognize that the real density is 2.71. Either figure is very high for the area, way above the average for the area. According to the information at hand, the Galaxy request would be at, or at, the highest and most dense development in the area. The county, we believe, should not allow the developer to use a private road effectively to mask what is a really higher density level than found in the surrounding communities. Even if the property is going to be developed using a private road, the development must still be held to the lesser density level of neighboring communities using public roads. Either way, they're way above density, however you calculate it. The developer shouldn't gain a windfall because he's using a private road. Bottom line, homes are going to be packed in. They're going to not look like the layout of...
And just if you could wrap up your comments, we've now exceeded time, which will give a little extra time to the applicant, but we have a couple more people to be heard from.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll do that. We'd ask that you consider the, the high density and what its impact and precedential nature may be. The density is 40 percent higher than every subdivision that we've noted for the area. We also note the developer has been provided an updated hydrology report. And in closing, we'd like to state on behalf of Coventry Green, we are preserving constitutional rights on behalf of the association and all property owners in the association, and we ask our exhibits be included in the record. And lastly, we ask that you recommend disapproval, or if you're inclined to recommend approval, that you condition it to a maximum of four lots instead of the five that are being now requested, plus a 10-foot vegetated landscape buffer to be supplemented with added landscape materials to screen adjacent properties, and that drainage must meet all county requirements and have no impact on Coventry Green lots that are downstream. We're here to answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And I think we have a virtual speaker, and what I'm going to do is with the rest of the speakers, ask them to keep it to about 15 seconds and tell us if there's anything new to add that hasn't already been said, because we're already a minute thirty over in time.
I have one more virtual speaker, but she indicated that she would also not like to speak, so I will call on her.
Okay.
Amy Tatro, Amy, you are unmuted.
Hi, I'm Amy Tatro, and I live directly behind, and I'm just in, you know, talking with Lisa Moore Shower and Rob Stein, just confirming everything they're saying, and we are opposed to this, the density is too high, the runoff, and everything they've said. So we're just supporting them.
Okay, thank you. And that's all our virtual, and did one gentleman want to make a comment who didn't?
No, sir, I was the engineer.
Okay.
If there are any questions.
Okay, good enough then. With that, the opposition went over two minutes and 12 seconds, so I'm going to give the opportunity to the applicant to come up and, and take that time if they'd like.
I don't think I'll need the entire two minutes, but with, the focus on the opposition has a lot to do with a private road, and just wanted to confirm that, you know, we did research as well with respect to communities and subdivisions who have used private roads, and some of them have even counted those private roads toward the lot size for those developments. But several of the examples include the development located at Vario Bend, this is about 1.17 miles, I think it's Lassiter Road and Johnson Ferry, but 1.7, 1.17 miles from the property. There's a development located at the northeast intersection of Lassiter Road and Covington Road, a development located on Canfield Lane, the development located on Carywoods Court, and the development located at Hartwood Drive. This one, this one road of several, there are several roads in that development, but, you know, the private road concept is not a new one. You know, we think that this is most beneficial for this particular development, and we've worked hard to make sure that the lot sizes are sufficiently large enough to not include the private road as far as, as far as the lot size. So we do not feel that this property is, we're trying to densely develop this property. And we also feel that the plans we have with respect to stormwater drainage will actually solve a problem for Coventry Green. I mean, they already are experienced issues with runoff, and we think that with the plans we're developing, that they may actually have a benefit at once the development is in place. And so if there's any other questions, we'll be happy to answer those.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll close the public portion of this hearing, and this is a case that Tony Waybright is handling, so I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. Let's, let's see. First question, Carl, when they submitted the site plan, it included a second PDF that was called a GRADE Plan, G-R-A-D. Do you have that attachment? There we go, thank you. So we're going to work with this one here for a little bit as we, as we go forward. First question, stormwater, Carl Carver.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Carl, we've had a number of discussions. Can you just briefly summarize what the options are for getting stormwater controlled and off of this site, you know, based upon either going to a different basin, which you've said, you know, stormwater prefers not to do or just doesn't do, or where you would be able to move stormwater within the basin?
Well, I'm assuming with this layout that the stormwater conceptual would be the same as the previous Seminole with an underground system in, under the road with maintenance shared by the homeowners. They would, I assume, still discharge at the rear of lot four, I think it is. Yeah, at the rear of lot four. That concept, you know, would still have to have some type of dispersment level spreader at the end of it to control how it's released into Coventry Green. For them to connect downstream or drain into the detention pond that's within Coventry Green, it would probably be better if they piped it to that detention pond than trying to control a level spreader. There'd just be somewhat less management, maintenance. If they tried to connect into any kind of system in Childers, it would be what we call changing the basin which the drainage is going to. It's something we normally do not allow, and it would impact the infrastructure or the other downstream detention ponds that would have to be evaluated. So the, the option is, is, to me, is, you know, the concept, what they've got, but the, the, how it discharges into Coventry Green is, is what's kind of to be determined. Right now, they're proposing a level spreader, which is an acceptable method.
And by a level spreader, what you mean would be a berm behind which the water would discharge, and then it would rise up over and just essentially seep or sheet over top of that berm?
Yeah. Right now, but behind lots two, three, and four, it sheet flows into the Coventry Green. And so the idea is to try to simulate that in a controlled environment. It's tough to maintain, and that's why I think our original recommendation was to pipe it into the detention pond or close to the detention pond that's two lots away in Coventry Green.
Any other questions from the other commissioners for Carl? All right, Carl, thank you. Let's see, anyone from DOT? Amy? Michael? Oh, Michael, a quick question. I agree. Good morning, thank you. In a normal residential development with a public road, what would be the distance from the outside curb to outside curb?
From, can you repeat that?
Okay, so on a, on a, on a typical residential project with a public road, what would be the, I know the width of the road is normally 24 feet, but what would be the distance from outside curb to outside curb, once you count the curb? Should we just call it 26 or 28, or what would we?
It's roughly 28.
28, okay, that's great, thank you.
And just for the record, give us your name and department.
Michael Francis, DOT.
Thanks.
All right, and let's see, anyone from fire safety?
Josh Davis, Cobb County Fire.
Good morning, thank you for being here. The applicant's changed from a cul-de-sac to a hammerhead, and that is normally appropriate and suitable for fire safety, correct?
As long as they have the dimensions, yes.
Okay, and obviously radius and all that fun stuff. And is there any issue as to whether it's a private hammerhead or a public hammerhead?
No, the dimensions are the same.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Yep.
Initial analysis on this, I mean, if, if we looked all around this property, everything around it is zoned R15, so from the standpoint of whether it's suitable to be zoned R15, I think the answer is obviously yes. After we get past that issue, then we have to look at the development of the property and determine whether or not the development is appropriate compared to adjacent and nearby The opposition provided a summary of densities in the area, and we looked at a similar summary when we just did Z40 on Wesley Chapel a few months ago. And in short, it says that we normally come in around two units per acre with R15. We have some that are less and some that are slightly more. So, so that, the fact that the applicant's at five would put them at 2.2, which is slightly over two units per acre. If they had four homes, they would be slightly under at 1.8 units per acre. So again, within that range that we have and that we've seen for all of those. One of the issues that had been discussed in the past is, as we went through this with them over the months, was the issue of setbacks, and originally they were looking for a setback variance. The site plan going from six to five, the new site plan eliminates that, but the, the issue for me on that remains that if it was a public road, as we've heard, we would have 28 feet from curb to curb, the right-of-way is 50. So even if there was a 25-foot variance instead of a 35-foot setback, we would have 25 feet from, from the house to the property line, and then we would have an additional 14 feet until we get to the curb. The way that this is laid out with the private road is that with the lot lines being where they are, and into the middle of the road, and with the, even though it's asking for a 35-foot setback from the property line, once we come in 14 feet from the center line of the road to the curb, these properties would then only be 21 feet from the curb line instead of the much larger distance if it was a public road with right-of-way. So that is a concern that I think is different and separates it from the development of the surrounding properties. The most recent property developed is called Childers Walk. It's literally just a little bit to the south and on the opposite side of Childers Road. It's 4.4 acres, and it was granted a maximum of eight units on that, which put them at about 1.8 units per acre. Carl, if you go back to the graded site plan that we had up. One item to note is that if you look at the grading lines that are put on the side of the homes, especially lots two, three, and four, and the back of lot one, as well as in between the homes, you'll see how they're having to grade that very steeply in order to, to get the land down to have, I guess, an exposed basement, and you'll see that between lots two and three, there's actually a very substantial retaining wall added in there. So, so while there may be an overall potential reduction in, in the stormwater flow, it certainly appears that at some places, that stormwater is going to be concentrated, running downhill at a much steeper rate, and, and then still having to flow off into the adjoining neighborhoods. So, so that process and that project provides some concern as to what the impact would be on the neighbors. From a number of units, on an infill project, we could look at it and say that, yes, five units essentially provides a one-to-one ratio of new lots to old lots, which would normally be okay. But I think what we're witnessing here is that trying to get five lots is creating a number of issues, not to mention a private road that would be expensive to be maintained, underground detention that would be expensive to be maintained. And I have two neighborhoods near my home in Smyrna that were done privately like that, and both of them have been making efforts, once they saw the bills after 20 years, to have their roads converted and their, and their stormwater converted to, to county because of the expense of maintenance. So I don't think we want to create those conflicts for the future. Any questions or any other thoughts or ideas from, from any other commissioners?
Well, first, I just wanted to thank all the, all the speakers for doing an excellent job of laying out their best case, and, and thank the planning commissioner from District Two for doing an excellent job of digging even deeper in the analysis, because it certainly seems that a, at a, at a high level, you could just go either way and, and it would be your discretion, but because you dug deeper, I think you've done an excellent job of, promoting a conclusion that, that deals with all the, all the facts and all the circumstances at the, at a very thorough level. I would suggest, based on what I, what I think I understand the planning commissioner from District Two to be suggesting, if it goes that way and recommends that this be deleted to R20 in a, in a four-lot plan, I, I would suggest to the council for the developer to consider the fact you have apparently Coventry Green lined up, prepared to litigate ad nauseam, and I, I question the wisdom of going that route, though that's certainly your right, but those would be my comments.
The comment I would have is that they're trying to, it's obvious to me that if they would just put a cul-de-sac, a public road in... would just put a cul-de-sac, a public road in, and have the required number of lots, I have no problem with an R-15, because the adjacent properties are all R-15. But I do think that if they follow the code, put the road in, and get whatever lots that would need the R-15, then I think that's the route to go. I think they're creating their own hardship. This hammerhead is ugly. They don't work that well, other than the fact that it gives them access, but they have no public road frontage. In other words, they're using a lot of variances for us to try to rezonate to make it fit. And I don't think that's the purpose of rezoning.
I just want to agree with Judy that I think R-15 is appropriate here.
I'll just add, this seems like the proverbial, you have a square peg in a round hole. It's just not, it's not a fit, it's out of character for the neighborhood. The burden that would be on these homeowners maintaining a private street and underground detention would be very high. You know, I just, there's really not anything to like in this plan. I don't think so. It doesn't make any sense. I think if we do anything, maybe hold it and ask them to come back with a new plan that has a public street with the cul-de-sac and see how it lays out. I don't want to just go ahead and say, "Do this," because we don't know how it's going to lay out or anything. And I think, you know, standard stormwater management would be a lot better for the, you know, new homeowners as well, because then the county would maintain it if it's located off of the public right-of-way and above ground. Those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. And I will go ahead and start a motion then at this time. My motion would be to recommend approval of Z-54 at R-15, subject to the following changes. The road shall be a public road with appropriate right-of-ways. The applicant will be granted a 25-foot front setback variance, similar to the surrounding neighborhoods. There would be no rear or side setback variances. The project should include an above-ground detention facility suitable to be dedicated to the county. And in order to accomplish this and these other items, the project shall have a maximum of four lots. So, you know, Mr. Beloit, I think we get to four lots, we just get there differently by doing R-15 and keeping it at that base. Assuming that we cannot get access to pipe the stormwater off-site, to make clear there shall be a berm around the edge of the property, the entire bordering property with the two neighborhoods, that berm shall include a 10-foot planted landscape buffer, two alternating rows, eight-foot tall, minimum eight-foot tall cryptum area, magnolia, or similar trees that provide a green screen buffer for the surrounding neighbors. The road should be a cul-de-sac instead of a hammerhead. And I believe that covers the stipulations that I would add to it before we send it to the Board of Commissioners.
I would second that. I would second it with, if we're going to reduce, did I hear you say you're going to reduce the front yard setback?
Yes.
Would you be willing to add that land to the back, to the rear setback?
That's what we normally do if we do that.
If you're going to take it from the front, let's add it to the back, so that...
Yes, I would be agreeable to that. That would mean a rear setback of 40 feet.
Correct.
Okay, so that, that is amended. Any other comment? Call the question, all in favor. I'll let it go. So, that carries five to zero. Okay, does anybody need a break? Are you doing okay?
I'm working. Maybe after the next one.
Okay, we'll go ahead and hear the next one. Usually, I get asked for a break about this time, so I think to ask people and they don't want it.
Rezoning case Z-65, Christopher McMillan, request rezoning from ONI to CRC for RV trailer sales in Land Lot 372 of the 16th District. The property is located on the west side of Canton Road and on the north side of Blackwell Circle. The applicant is present, and earlier, there was one person opposed to this rezoning case. I would ask the applicant and the opposition to come forward, be sworn in. Ms. Chairman, Board, there is one person virtually who's opposed, who wishes to speak, so we'll cue them up after the person speaks.
Okay, thank you, John. Go ahead, whenever you're ready, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commissioners. I'm Kevin Moore here, on behalf of the owner and applicant, Christopher McMillan, in this rezoning application. This property is .66 acres. It's located at the intersection of Canton Road and Blackwell Circle. It is currently zoned to the GC, general commercial category. It has been long used for a massage business that occurs here at this location. It's really a converted house for that purposes, and you've seen that on Canton Road from time to time where that has occurred. What we are proposing is to rezone this by agreement to a deletion category of NRC for the purpose of RV trailer sales. That's not RVs, not motorized vehicles, but the trailers that are towed, that you see, would only be the specific use that is being proposed for this location. What's shown on your site plan, there is some additional pavement that will be put down for parking of the RV trailers in the front. In addition, you can see on this site plan, we highlighted where there will be additional buffering and tree plantings along that bordering boundary line to our rear. Currently, this property has two access points, both on Blackwell Circle, the main access that will go to the parking area and front of the building, which will be renovated for purposes of sales office and office. There's also a very small side driveway that accesses a tool shed. In our discussions with folks that had alerted us to some concerns by residents along Black, on Blackwell Circle, we have added stipulations to ensure that no RV trailers will be allowed to be parked on or along Blackwell Circle or Canton Road, for that matter. All parking has to occur onsite, which you would expect. They're going to, obviously, expand in the parking area to accommodate that, and that should be expected of them, and we've stipulated to that. In addition, that side, that second small side driveway, which accesses a tool shed to the rear, cannot be used to park RV trailers either. They need to be located in the front sales area. We've added those as stipulations. In addition, we have added stipulations per our letter of November 24th that specifically exclude adult theme stores, pawn, title pawn, or check cash establishments and massage parlors as permitted uses under the NRC category, as well as proposing that RV trailer sales be allowed as a special exception use under the NRC. Where do we get those from? Well, we had been, we had conversations with Ms. Carol Brown of Canton Road Neighbors, and ultimately, she had recommended those additional stipulations. We have included those in our letter. She has a letter dated October 25th, on behalf of Canton Road Neighbors, expressing these additional conditions would be, would result in their support, and we have done that, and they have, in fact, induced support of this application for rezoning. And I'm going to have that letter separately, so I can give that to the clerk. In addition, Mr. McMillan has visited with other area properties and uses, and nearby and across the street, including Blackwell Elementary School, which has sent a letter from Melissa Shackelford, his principal, supporting, expressing their support for this application. In addition, the St. Andrew Methodist Church has also, has a letter expressing their support for this application to Mr. McMillan. And lastly, Mr. Robert Philkins of Philkins Culbert and Associates and Insurance Office and Business, also there on Canton Road, immediately in this area of the property, has likewise expressed his support for this application. And I'll submit those for the record to the clerk. I think this application has been supported by staff, has been obviously supported by the planning commission to this point. We believe it's a vast improvement over the current use, as well as begins to transform Canton Road, as it's continuing to transform, to more suitable uses, especially commercial and retail uses and offerings that Canton Road has seen. This particular area is within a neighborhood activity center, and the property is within a neighborhood activity center, and is well-supported by the future land use plan with these conditions. I'm here to answer any questions. We believe we've presented an excellent application and one that's been well-supported. We do have opposition, and we hope to continue to discuss with them and try to address any questions we can, and we'll certainly work towards that end. But we've done everything that we know of to do today to address their concerns. So, with that, we respectfully request your recommendation of approval to the Board of Commissioners, based on our letter dated November 24th with the additional stipulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Now, we'll hear from the opposition. Okay, just give us your name for the record, and go ahead when you're ready. And if you want to, I think there's some wipes and hand sanitizers, if you need any of that up there.
I'm good. I don't need to touch anything, do I?
You don't have to.
I wrote down some of my thoughts here.
Give us your name for the record.
I'm Dr. Hope Cantor.
Okay.
I'm here about 3497 Canton Road. They have already been selling RVs in this location, apparently illegally, for several months. Every time they sell an RV, they block the only legal route into my neighborhood. There is another way for me to get home, but it involves trespassing. This illegal RV selling has blocked my way into the neighborhood several times. I spoke to the lawyer this morning, and he said that the sales were being conducted at a different location, but I have watched money changing hands, so that may be inaccurate information. I discussed it with my neighbors. The RV sales have also blocked several of my neighbors when they were trying to get home. I once was prevented from going home after picking my daughter up from school for over 10 minutes by the RV salesperson. I've honked the horn trying to get home, he is simply not willing to not block the road. His making a few dollars is more important to him than letting us get home. The location of, is the driveway of a small house, although I know that they're trying to change to the front of the building, and it's simply not an appropriate place to sell RVs. It has been causing trouble and will likely make more trouble if it is expanded. I've spoke to several neighbors, they think it would be an eyesore. The driveway into it is not onto Canton Road, it's onto the road where I live, and so it will continue messing up the traffic into my neighborhood, and me and my neighbors do not want this, with this problem to be legitimized. It's just not an appropriate location for RV sales. The lawyer just told us all that the church supports the application. You should know that whoever spoke with the church promised that the property owner would join the church, and he has not followed through. There's one new issue. While I was sitting in this room, the property owner has called me on the phone twice, sent me a text message, to which I replied that I wanted to communicate through his lawyer, and then responded to my request not to communicate with me. He sent me another text. I've been sitting here in that seat back there, wondering if I should feel like they're intimidating me. Also, I do have another neighbor online that is, would be happy to talk, but she's unable to talk because her computer connection isn't working properly.
Okay, is there anything else you want to let us know?
No, sir.
Okay, and then we'll go to, if there is anybody online who can talk, we'll...
I think she's worked out her issues, so...
Okay.
The virtual speaker is Kathy Burns. Kathy, you are unmuted.
Yes, this is Kathy Burns, and I am Hope Cantor's neighbor. And I too, my husband and I both, as well as our neighbor across the street, we do oppose the RV sales at the bottom of the hill, because many times, as Hope has explained, we have tried to come home, and the problem is not parking the RVs on the street. The problem is, when people come to load their RVs, they're trucks. They're the one that is crossing our street while they're loading the RVs. So, if that can be done on the property, that would be great. I mean, what we would really like is to not have access from Blackwell Circle altogether and just completely on Highway 5. But I understand that's not a possibility. But anyway, that's the whole reason, because I too have been stopped at the bottom of the hill while a truck has been stretched across our road, loading an RV. And that's the issue. And I don't see how that's going to, how that's going to be changed.
Okay, anything else you'd like to add?
No, other than I agree that it's going to be an eyesore at the bottom of the hill as it come up. I mean, I understand it's zone commercial, and there's nothing I can do about that, but, you know, having a parking lot full of RVs is really not, you know, aesthetically pleasing when you come up your street to go home. But the main thing is, for me, is the blocking of the street, because that has happened multiple times.
Okay.
You know, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments. Do we have any other speakers?
There are no more virtual speakers.
Okay. With that, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and turn this over to Judy to lead our discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could have Mr. Moore come back up here, please. Kevin, in listening to the opposition, one of the problems apparently is, that I wasn't aware of, that they had been selling trailers from here prior to the zoning. Is this correct?
According to my client, that is not correct.
That is not correct.
There have not been any sales of the RV trailers. He's got a, they have a separate business in Hiram, RV, for RV sales, where they have a lot there. The particular, they have a vendor who does wash RVs for them, and just due to proximity and location, would, from time to time, use this location and the driveway to the tool shed to do so, which is where the loading and unloading would occur, and that's who they were, I believe they were encountering, was him doing that on their property here. They were not doing that in the front parking lot, because that, the massage therapist, who's the current tenant of this property, they were not interfering with that work and with that space, and they were simply utilizing that rear driveway to conduct that activity from time to time. But no sales have occurred, and that would also explain where, if that particular person was unloading or loading or putting those on a truck and stretching across that, why it would block Blackwell Circle. They did express that concern to us, and that's why we have eliminated that driveway to the tool shed for any parking of RVs. No RV trailers parked on the street. Also, once you expand that lot and use that lot, that's where they'll be, you know, they'll be washed there and sold there, so that the problem there, loaded there and so forth, will all occur now in the front and not on the street. So, that issue that they had, will does absolutely go away with the stipulations that we have. And we can go further if we need to. We can say there'll be no loading or unloading or anything else that occurs with the RVs along Blackwell Circle. The issue with access... The issue with access on Blackwell Circle versus Canton Road is because this is this property is at that intersection, we're not going to meet the distance separation requirement for DOT to put in a driveway on Canton.
Yeah, I understand this.
That's our issue.
The only access would be from this point, but it seems to me like if we did a fence down through there to block it off, then and you move your all of your parking to the front, which you proposed in the other plan, I think that we had up there.
Yes.
That all the parking, how many could we limit the number of trailers?
Sure. No more than 20?
No more than 20 trailers at any time.
Right.
Okay.
Do you even have 20 parking spots, sir?
You will when you do the.
We have the we're doing additional parking. We're expanding that lot.
Additional parking is gonna be done to the front of the building. That was the other site plan where they showed.
Okay, one of the books. Okay.
So in that additional, see.
And if it needs to be a little less than that, that's it's that was more of a number just in general, but and if it needs to be a little less than that, that's fine. I just was wanting to.
Okay, so we got.
Say no more than.
Could we reduce, why don't we reduce that down from 20 to 15?
That's fine.
Okay, so we're gonna be 15 trailers. We're gonna do fencing along Blackwell so that we don't have the problem of backing out or blocking.
Sure.
The loading would occur in the front there on the new addition paved.
Correct.
And then also, could we do a landscape plan to go down Blackwell Circle there landscaping?
Can we do that in conjunction with the fencing and landscaping in front of the fence?
Yes, you could do that at the same time.
Sure.
That would be acceptable.
We'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, that would be acceptable. And I think with those provisions, I think it should solve the problem. One of the problems we have is the use of the current property owner and I believe this is not, would you explain to everybody, most people think this is really an RV. It's not RVs that's gonna be there. It's the trailer part of them.
That's correct. It's just it's the one you tow and go camping.
Okay. So I think that would resolve the issues that were brought up by doing those things. So does anyone else have any comments?
I'll just add some comments. And you and I briefly talked about this and I thought this is gonna be utility trailers and smaller, but you know, I've owned RV trailers like this and they're, you know, a small trailer is 20 feet, you know, I've owned up to 37 feet. Average goes from about 25 to 32 feet on on the trailers. The space I see is 25 deep, which really isn't that deep for a trailer and then only 24 feet of aisleway. It's gonna be nearly impossible to get those trailers in those spaces. Also, there's no room to turn them around as you come in really, so people are gonna be backing and pulling from Blackwell Circle, which is probably where they're already getting the problem. So hearing that, I don't really think they're they're solving any of the issues, you know, and also for me, you know, just for cars and RVs are far bigger than cars, these trailers. We require a minimum of an acre paving, not just an acre of land, an acre of paving because what we've found and we have a problem in District 4 all the time with these small car lots are loading and unloading vehicles out in the right of way. I mean, I see them do it in the middle of Veterans Memorial in the center lane, pull the trucks and unload and and that, which is why we have the minimum one acre of paving. This doesn't even have but two thirds of an acre of land altogether. You know, I understand there's a desire to get rid of the use that's currently there, but this just seems to be going in the wrong direction to me and and a use that really doesn't belong in a neighborhood activity center and a use, I mean, typical RV trailer lot is acres and acres, not not even just one acre. So I, you know, I have to question whether this would be successful to start with, but that's really not our our and our our question in general, but you know, I just don't see that this plan works in the least. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Gault. Yes.
Kevin, as I see the proposal, are there only 16 parking spaces?
That's what's shown on the plan and that area can be expanded even further if it was to the commission's liking. I mean, that area can be expanded further for for parking.
John Peterson, I have a question. Is this a permitted use since Shaw had recommended approval, is this a permitted use under the NRC?
It's not a permitted use under the NRC. That's why they started with CRC because that's where it's permitted. The staff request to delete it down to NRC with this use.
For this use only?
Correct.
Correct. Did staff have a problem with this type of use in this location?
As long as it's kept low intensity as the applicant states, then we don't have a problem with it. You know, this is a small dealer with a small lot. There's really no room for it to grow into anything bigger than what it is.
And limited to the number that they would park out there, closing it off?
Correct.
And expanding that driveway in the front should solve the problems of the neighbors?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, John. Kevin. I think that in listening to Gault and listening to the opposition, I think we need to expand. I don't want to really hold this. Can you have a new site plan drawn up by the Board of Commissioners meeting?
Yes.
Where you expand the parking in the front so that they have, because it can go over to the side there. There's plenty of room for it to go over.
Correct.
Where you can have the turnaround that we've talked about where they come in to connect it up and then bring it back out. So if you, I'm gonna make a motion, first of all, I'll make a motion that we approve C-65 to the NRC classification, subject to staff comments, subject to fence being installed down Blackwell Circle. At the same time, landscaping plan to be included, the parking to be in the front, to be expanded to the north so that adequate parking and turnaround be provided to remove the trailers from this location. And that would be my motion.
And just for clarification, you wanted staff comments and recommendations?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
What about your prior comments regarding fencing and landscaping?
I included that.
Okay, okay.
The fencing and the landscaping, you got that, didn't you, Kevin? Yeah, I've included that. And expand the parking so that there is has plenty of room to connect up and come out without the maneuvering that you were talking about. So and to have that ready within the two weeks to the Board of Commissioners. So that would be my motion.
Okay, and we did have a second, right?
Yes.
Okay, from Alice. Okay, it looks like Tony is.
One point of clarification, Carl, can you go back to the overhead, the GIS overhead on that? And there we go. Now, if if I'm fine with expanding the parking to the north, but I think if you look at the yard area, there's been a lot of a lot of off-roading, if we want to call it that. Is that what is that interparcels accessible? It appears people driving through the yards or coming off of the road.
I don't know, but they can expand. I have no idea what that is.
Okay, but.
I have no idea.
He has no idea. I have no.
I do not know, so what that represents.
Okay, I would just want to make sure that whatever's done on the expansion, we don't see a continuation of that.
Shouldn't.
Yeah, of course. By expanding it, I think and taking the parking out is gonna do away with it anyway.
Okay.
Any further comment? Okay, with that, call the question all in favor. And all opposed, so that would be that would carry four to zero with myself opposed.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody need a break now?
Yes.
Okay, okay, we'll take a 10-minute break. Be back at 11:10.
Planning Commission meeting, we have a few more cases to cover. So I'm going to ask John to read the next one into the record.
Thank you. Next case is resoning case Z sixty-seven, Yolanda Crease. Request rezoning from LRO to NRC for Barbara Beauty Shop in Land Lot ten oh six of the nineteenth district. The property is located on the east side of Oster Road, north of Elmwood Drive. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for resoning case Z sixty-seven, Yolanda Crease? Is she online, Jeanie?
No.
No, okay. Is there anyone here opposed for resoning case Z sixty-seven? No one here opposed?
Okay, well, you know, it's, I had called the applicant and never had a call back. So I haven't even talked to the applicant on this one. So I wouldn't want to move forward with it. So I think what we'll do is just continue it till our February hearing. So I'll make motion to continue Z sixty-seven till our February hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing any call to question, all in favor, carries five to zero.
Okay. Next case is resoning case Z seventy of two thousand and twenty, CS Realty Group LLC. Request a rezoning from R thirty to R twenty for a residential subdivision in Land Lot five oh seven of the nineteenth district. Property is located on the north side of Gaden Road, west of Old Lost Mountain Road. The applicant is present. And can I get a show of people here who are opposed to resoning case Z seventy? Please raise your hands. Let the record show there's five people here opposed, in person opposed to resoning case Z seventy. There's no one here virtually opposed. All those folks who would like to speak in opposition, please come forward to be sworn in.
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you.
If you were, go ahead, Kevin.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Quite all right. Thank you. Mr. Chairman and Planning Commissioners, I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of CS Realty Group. The applicant in this application for rezoning, this concerns just over almost thirty and a half acres located on Gaden Road. It's on your screen now is the GIS or aerial view of this thirty acre tract. It's currently zoned R thirty. What we are proposing is a rezoning to R twenty for development of a new subdivision with a maximum of forty-three homes. Please also note that our application does not include any variances to the R twenty zoning category requirements. One of the important things to show with this aerial in your GIS map is this property is zoned R thirty and it is adjacent to two other R thirty tracks. Both the north side and south side across Gaden Road are both zoned R thirty. But please note what those uses are. On the north side is a large church that's on that R thirty track has been there and continues to be there. It's a huge, very large, good church that's located there. So that's certainly not R thirty use. The other R thirty property, which is directly across the street, is an elementary school. So there and again, it is a public institutional use, though it's zoned R thirty and allowed on that property. It is not an R thirty use. What you do notice when you go around the surrounding area is that the residentially used property is R twenty and R twenty OSC to our east and west and R twenty to our east as well as R twenty OSC even further down and around Gaden Road and a number of other R twenty and R twenty OSC developments and neighborhoods that are in this immediate area and adjacent to us. When we approached this particular property and looking at it and what we felt might be justified in terms of the single family development and what's going on in terms of trends of zoning and approvals, we felt and believed, and CS Realty felt and believed, that a R twenty with minimum twenty thousand square foot lots at a minimum for a single family subdivision for this property was much more in keeping with the surrounding area. That's why we have only a maximum of forty-three lots. That's just over one point four units per acre. So it's even on the low end of what can be developed under R twenty. As you know, and just for the benefit of others, you know, R twenty typically or on average yields one point seven five units per acre for our twenty subdivision. And what we're now proposing is one that's right at one point four units per acre. You can see from our site plan and looking at the bottom is Gaden Road. Just to orient you where our entry will be in alignment with the school entry point across the street. We have a total of forty-three homes. We do have in show where we'll have the construction buffers in place during development and construction. If you look on the left side of your screen, what you're seeing is the adjoining R twenty OSC subdivision that has far smaller lots and you can see that our lots against their lots, we have a lot fewer of them. So this is kind of the opposite of what a lot of times you'll see us present, you'll see applicants present is presenting one that's actually less dense than the neighboring subdivisions and as well as larger lots than the adjoining subdivision. In addition, what we've proposed with our stipulation letter that's dated November twenty-fifth, this will have a mandatory homeowners association, it will have covenants and it will be governed by those homeowner association rules and regulations that you would be accustomed to seeing in any well-established neighborhood or subdivision. Just by reference and for point of information for those who might be interested, the projected price point is in the high threes to low fours for this property. This will be a well-appointed subdivision of new homes of a very nice price point that we have minimum square footages of twenty-two hundred square feet for these homes and they'll range upwards to twenty-eight hundred, three thousand or more potentially for these, for these homes. So these are going to be very nice homes as part of fitting into this residential neighborhood. It is completely and utterly consistent with the surrounding area. In fact, it actually stands out as having larger lots and less density than the surrounding area. And that's very intentional on this applicant's part. He's trying to be responsible and respectful as well as including appropriate buffers where needed. Again, just for those that may be not, not informed or not aware of certain regulations, we do have a detention, stormwater detention pond that's on a portion of this site. And just for their benefit and it's shown in our plan, that must be landscaped and fenced according to county regulations with the landscaping to the exterior. So they're not looking at a empty detention pond, even though this one, we've carved out a very big area that's so that we can make sure we don't have to try to have walls and things like that. So it's not as obvious of a stormwater management area. But it will still be fenced and landscaped in accordance with county regulations and requirements, which will provide that screening and we've noted that on our plan. Again, we think this is actually an excellent job of planning and hope that you agree and would respectfully request your recommendation of approval to the Board of Commissioners consistent with your staff's recommendation for approval as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Now we'll hear from the opposition.
And Mr. Chairman, we do have one person who'd log in virtually to speak in opposition to this case.
Okay, we'll, we'll hear from one in person, then we'll go to the virtual one and then come back to the in person.
Hi, good morning. I'm Desiree Hackett. Thank you for having me here today. I am on the board for the HOA and I speak for the entire neighborhood when I speak today. For this property, for this location, one of the few things that I've noticed in the documentation is that these, the home sizes are a thousand square feet less full size than what we have in the surrounding properties. That's potential for, you know, for the value of our homes to be diminished. We have the potential for traffic overflow. The entrance to this neighborhood is completely across, directly across the street from the elementary school. And if you live over on that side of town or if you're over on that side of town, pre-COVID, hopefully we get back to normal soon, traffic is stagnant there in the mornings. Parents sit there waiting to pick up their children, the whole nine yards. So not only are you taking forty-two homes and you're doubling that with cars, that's eighty, eighty-four cars that you're going to have in addition to the already overflow for the school. For the stormwater runoff, my home is located directly behind where that storm runner, stormwater runoff is going to be placed. As well as you can see that there's a creek that runs through there. Before forty-two homes get placed on that property, we already have a flooding issue along Noel Place on that entire backside of our neighborhood. So if you place forty-two homes and you have all that additional stormwater, where does that put the other homeowners on Noel Place? They already have the issue of flooding. And then again, you have where we do have that creek that runs through that runs right into my adjoining neighbor's property as well. So one of the things that we were proposing and possibly looking at, you know, if, if we do move forward, can we have the stormwater runoff moved or relocated or reassessed towards the backside of the church where there are no homes, there are no adjoining properties and maybe you can manage that stormwater a little bit better? Yep, size of homes, stormwater, flooding, traffic, that's all.
Got it all. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Next speaker.
Good day, everybody. My last name is Holiness, first name Shalaco. I am opposed to this particular development mainly because, one, I love the green space, to be honest. Thus far, we got several homes and so on being built in the area, which I figure is enough. Most of our green spaces and so on is disappearing. But with the green space they brought to me here, we had woodland, roads and so on. On Maglin, all those trees are gone. And this is something that, we live in our community because we like the aesthetics of it. We love our green space. We love the homes that are there and we are happy there. Now you want to, they want to bring in more people and so on, which is nothing wrong with that. But our green spaces is leaving us and they'll never return once they build them houses in there. And where do that put us? This is all I want to know. Who considers us? People ought to make money, that's good. But the extent of the neighborhood community and so on, the way it is, need to be remained as is, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. Good morning to the chairman, good morning to everyone. My name is Calphiree Reed. I live at twenty-two oh four in Noel Place, right in the corner of this development. As you can see on the map, which, this is the first time I'm seeing this, so bear with me. As you see the water line, it comes right through our property now. So when they disturb this area here, you see what's going to happen to us. Everything, you see my house right there on the end? We're having water issues now because, see, this is a hill. You're sloping from the school and you're coming down the hill already. We're seeing We're seeing water issues. You know, when you had that big flood, guess what happened? Everything got long from our house and the houses right up from there. All the way to Gaden Road, that backside is a creek.
Just ask you to move back to the mic a little bit. Sorry. So everybody can see and hear you.
Sorry. With the homes there already. And you're putting more homes, more concrete. So when you get concrete, I'm not an engineer, but I know the water runs faster. So you're really going to have, I can't even imagine the flood plain. That's, I mean, the flooding is going to happen to us. It's, I'm so concerned. We're not going to stop them from building. It seems to be now that, like you said, the green space is, you know, I can look out now, we see animals. We won't see that anymore. When I first moved, that's the reason we moved out here because it was quiet. It wasn't a lot of people, the traffic and cars. And now we, you know, we see the turkeys used to come out in the morning and parade. We see the deer come out. When this comes, this is, oh, that's gone. And they were talking about putting a retention pond. Oh my gosh. You open us up to, let's see, what animals? The crawly ones? Yeah. But we're not going to stop them from building. But what I ask you to do, first of all, limit some of those homes. That's just too many. And the value of, he said, good value, but I don't know what good value is anymore. Because I see some homes for 200, 300, anyway. So I am a little bit nervous, sorry. But that is my real, it's, it's this impact of so many homes. It's a large space, true or not, because that was a single family home we first moved out there. That was just one house. On all that property. Now you're going to put all these homes in there. My objection is that go back and reevaluate the land. Because it's going to impact that community. And we have a lot of single family homes all through those woods back there. You don't see them on the map. It's going to evaluate the whole area. Because there's so many of them. That, that's going to be our, our biggest problem. And of course, water. Too much water. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, did we have a virtual speaker?
He disappeared.
Okay, okay. So next in person?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Mario Hansbrough and I thank you guys for hearing us at this time. I live at 2311 Magallane, which backs up into that property. I want to reiterate basically what they said about the water. The water is really going to be an issue with the retention pond. All of our neighbors, including me, Desiree and I are neighbors, as well as Ms. Reed. We do have water issues as well as our neighbors. So we definitely want to see that taken care of before this project moves forward. I, I don't think any of us here are, are here to quell anybody's American dream of owning a home. It's, it's a beautiful thing to own a home. But one of the issues I do have is with the entrance being at Gaden Road. My wife is an educator in Cobb County, has been an educator in Cobb County for 15 years and she works across the street at Barnum School System. She's been there for two years now. When we first moved there, we had been there less than a month and it is a blind curve, as you can see, that leads up to that school. I had an accident right there as early in the morning because it was so congested. And being in my house less than six months, I had an accident. I think Desiree's son also had an accident at that blind curve as well. I would like to see them really not put that entrance right across from the school because it is very congested there in the morning with the school buses. With all of the parents. Sometimes the parents use that vacant lot over there as a parking spot sometimes. When they have things to help their younger kids into the school. So that area gets really, really congested in the mornings and in the afternoon. And because of that blind spot coming from, I don't know which north, south, I don't know. But because of that blind curve there. So I, I think it would be a better, I think it's so many different ways that you could put entrances into that subdivision that would not congest that area and would be a lot safer for the community as well as the students and the teachers as well. So I would like for you guys to consider that. But I love my backyard right now because I get to see all of the trees. And I understand that there are subdivisions that are going up everywhere in Cobb County and all over the state and that's a great thing. But as they were saying, you know, we're going to miss the wildlife. You can wake up in the mornings, you can see deer, you can see wild turkey, you can see raccoons, you can see. I think there might be wild cats or several different things. And I'm from Mississippi, so I kind of enjoy seeing, seeing those things out. So there's going to be a, a, a large amount of green space that's lost. But again, I do want to reiterate the dangers of that entrance being there as well as the dangers that water has to go somewhere. And it's already coming into our neighborhood. And I think our biggest fear is that more and more water is going to come into our neighborhood and cause additional damages to our homes. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And with that, Kevin, they went over about two minutes and 12 seconds. Would you like a little time? We always try and give both sides equal time.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of brief comments. I, I do note that each of the speakers in opposition lives in a house in a lot that's smaller than what we're proposing. They live in an R20 OSC where those same wildlife used to live before their subdivision went in. And I understand certainly it seemed like they're very, very good people who are just want to look out for their neighborhood, but I really think that they're the main concern I heard, which is something that we can all do something about is from a stormwater standpoint. You know, we'll, we can look at that with, with Cobb County Stormwater Department. Cobb County Stormwater does an excellent job these days and we will be meeting all of their requirements. The difference between our, what we're proposing versus how it's zoned today is around 10 homes. Plus or minus of what we're proposing. With those 10 homes come a host of stipulations, become a host of review that we can take a hard look at it and make sure. If we can move that, that stormwater pond, we'll be happy to do that. You just have to make sure you put it on a downhill side. Water only goes downhill and you can see, there's, what's shown on GIS, yes, shows a blue line stream. We've not, our engineers have looked at that and are going to work through that, but it doesn't actually come through the middle of the property like that. As a classified stream. But we're, you know, fully prepared if we can move that around to do so and happy to do that. Last comment I'll make is on the entrance on Gaden. DOT likes for us to, any development to line up entry points. We are also, and it may not be, they may not be aware, but also because of this development and what's being proposed as a different apart from what will happen under R30. We're required to put in a deceleration lane, curb, gutter and sidewalk along Gaden Road as well as a left-hand turn lane. So we're expanding the right-of-way on our side of the road there with new road infrastructure. So that's part of what we're doing is, is with this. But certainly we can move the entrance if DOT lets us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Boy, to the second.
A little clock.
I know, but you just little experience at that. Okay, this is, I'll now close the public comment portion of the hearing. We just closed it. We ran out of time. We actually gave a couple of minutes over time on each one. So I think we got the, the big points here. What I'd like to do is start with the stormwater management issue and, and ask for Carl Carver from Stormwater Management Division of Cobb County.
Yes, I'm online.
Okay. Carl, I know you've been listening and hearing all the comments and that. I know you've reviewed plans preliminarily. You know, we don't get into the final till, till we get to what we call plan review. Where they do all the engineered drawings. But one, do you think there's potential to move this, this detention? Or is that the place where it really needs to go on this lot?
There, there could be some potential because if there's a, a drainage swell on the rear side of the lot that, of the property. And both of those drain to about the same point. So it's, it's staying within the same basin, which is what we would be looking for. So there, there could be with some engineering, they could possibly look at relocating it.
Okay. And do you think this would be a case where we'd want to look at doing what we sometimes call over detaining? Or having them detained to the next higher storm level?
Well, in my existing stipulations, I have them to, detaining to the existing capacity downstream. So right now they would be draining into a storm drain pipe in the adjacent subdivision. So they would have to evaluate the capacity. If, if it stayed in the current location, they'd have to evaluate the capacity of that system to make sure that they're not exceeding the capacity of that system.
Okay.
So by default, it would over detain.
Okay. So, so basically instead of this water flowing off of this parcel like it does now into these people's potentially backyards and that. A lot of it's going to flow into the pond and then be piped through instead of flowing onto there. So do you think this may have potential to help some of their current flooding problems?
It, it could. It might not be connected to the pipe system in the adjacent neighborhood, but there may be a gap in the pipes. But we could entertain looking at connecting to it. We've, we've allowed that before.
Okay. So it sounds like there's some, some work and I know you guys are dedicated to, to solving problems. So one thing I want to do is encourage all of the neighbors here who have, you know, stormwater issues to reach out to the Cobb County Stormwater Management Division and Carl Carver. And that way he knows exactly what issues you're having and, and that, and they can work on engineering it. And making sure it's engineered to, to ensure your problems don't get any worse, but hopefully they get better. As they do it. And that's often the case that we're able to do. Does anybody else have questions for Carl? Doesn't look like it. So, okay, thank you, Carl. With that, do we have somebody from DOT? I don't see Michael here anymore. Is there anybody on the line?
Amy Diaz.
Hey, Amy.
Yes.
Good to hear from you.
Hello.
Okay. You know, there, there's been some talk about the traffic and this, and the, and I think part of it, queuing at the school. And whether there was suggestion that we shouldn't align the driveway with the school driveway, the new road. Do you want to just talk about, you know, Cobb County, and this is Department of Transportation engineer, Amy is, for all those listening. About what the Cobb County policies are and why you'd want something or not want something and, and what all they have to do in this situation?
So our policy is, is as I mentioned, that we prefer the, the intersections be lined up. However, they can offset them if they have sufficient distance to do so. We require at least 100 feet offset distance between two access points like that. We have a, in our, in our comments, recommendations, and this is standard, that they will have to meet site distance for wherever their driveway is. So if they don't, if they, I heard a concern about a curve. If there is any kind of site distance limitation, that will have to be dealt with during the plan review process. That's something we're very strict on.
Okay. And that just means they have to be able to see a certain distance based on the speed limit of the road.
Correct. And as, as Kevin mentioned, we are requiring a deceleration lane and a left turn lane. Which will get some of that slower moving traffic out of the way of people that are just going through. So.
Okay. Is there, just out of curiosity, is there any plans to, to do a decel lane into the school? I know that wouldn't be paid for by the applicant, but.
Um, I'm not aware of any decel plans. Well, I take that back. I have, I have.
There is a decel lane.
Yeah, there's a decel lane there. I'm looking at a plan for the school. So, so yeah, that's already present.
Okay, good. So that's good. So hopefully, hopefully if, and any of your neighbors who are seeing the traffic issues there with the school when it opens back up, contact Cobb DOT. Because if they're, if they're having people lined up out on the road in the, in the way, they'll work with the school system to get them stacked up on, on the school system property.
Correct. Yeah, schools are not permitted to block roadways in that fashion.
Okay. Anybody else have a question for Amy? Okay, thank you, Amy.
No problem. I'm here if you have any other cases.
Appreciate it. Okay, so I guess in reviewing this case, I'll tell you typically what we see on these zoning cases when they come in, in this area. One being, you know, on where Moon Road dead ends. We had a subdivision originally come in and they were asking for a density, I think it was around five units an acre. We ended up rezoning it to, to allow, I think, two and a half units an acre for a residential senior living, which generates less traffic. So, so the traffic input impact went way down on that. We just had another case on Moon Road. And I think the original ask was right about five units an acre. On that one as well, that case ended up being withdrawn as we pushed down the, the density and didn't allow it to go that high. But there were discussions of that one being in that two and a half unit per acre frame. You know, I think as those of us who have sat up here for a while, we, we don't get very many cases where the applicant's only asking for 1.4 units an acre. That's a, a low density subdivision. We occasionally see them, but not, not often. Usually we're getting asked for far, far more density. And usually we're getting asked for variances, meaning they don't want to set the houses back or the lots aren't wide enough or some other issue. In this particular case, they're not asking for variances. Another thing we see commonly that, that Kevin Moore referred to is usually when we're getting a new zoning. We're often seeing the new subdivision having maybe two lots lining up to somebody else's one lot. And this is more a case of the existing subdivision having two lots lining up to one new lot. So, so from that standpoint, I think there's a whole lot less impact. You know, we'd all love to save the green space. But that's something we, you know, we can't do through zoning. You know, the, the Georgia constitution requires that we allow people a reasonable economic use of their property. So, you know, when you look at the surrounding area and almost everything's R20 of some type. Either what we call a straight R20, which means every lot is 20,000 square feet. Or the R20 OSC where each individual lot may be a little bit smaller, but then they set aside additional land as green space. And, you know, that's why in this case with the subdivision to the And, you know, that's why, in this case, with the subdivision to the west, the lots are much smaller than 20,000, even though it's an R20 zoning, because there's a lot of land set aside. And that often comes down to a choice of a developer as to which way they'd like to go with it, and how the land lays out and that. With this particular parcel, it's already zoned R30, which means without any approval from, from anybody as far as zoning, they could probably develop, I think I wrote down staff estimated 27 homes. This is a pretty square parcel generally, and, and not the hardest, so they may even get a little bit more than that, it's, you know, that's just like an average. So in this case, they're asking for 43 homes, which is really on the low-density side for everything we see. So I know, you know, it may sound like a lot, but it's really not in comparison, you know, we, it wouldn't have surprised me if somebody came in and asked for 100 homes on this parcel. They probably wouldn't have got approved at 100, but it wouldn't surprise me if somebody came forward with 100, or, or if we were talking about in the other two cases nearby here that I mentioned, the developers started out asking for what would be the equivalent of 150 homes on this parcel, on those other two. They didn't get it, but that's what they started out asking for, so in this case, at 43 homes and, and roughly 1.4 units per acre, that's, that's definitely low-density, it's even very low-density. So I can't see any reason to deny them, I certainly want them to, to work to try and address any issues with stormwater management and that. Let me see, I'm looking for some of my notes here. Does anybody else have any comments before I make a motion? Go ahead, Fred.
The only other concern I heard articulated that you have not already addressed, Mr. Chairman, is just simply the size of the adjoining, the, the homes in the adjoining lot, there was a concern expressed regarding that size relative to this size, I'd be interested in your comments on that.
Yeah, and why don't we, if Kevin could come back up, maybe address that, because they have a minimum of 2,200, I assume they're going to have a range there. I forgot about that, thank you for reminding me.
Sure. When, when we're talking about minimum house sizes, there's a zoning minimum, okay? Here, we're proposing a zoning minimum, meaning by zoning, the minimum is 2,200 square foot, these will range upwards to 3,000 and over. Likewise, when you see covenants being written, a lot of times, your covenants will have a minimum square footage that matches that zoning square footage, and yet, the houses actually built are far larger, it's just a minimum, it gives you a floor so that you know that it's not all the way at the bottom. For, I mean, for example, the R20 zoning category has a minimum house size of 1,200 square feet, and so, we're, we're going way in excess of that.
And so, would you, go ahead.
Kevin, what do they estimate the price range of the homes are going to be in this new subdivision?
From 375 to 425.
Okay.
So very healthy price point, great for this area and great for continued home ownership in the area.
And what, what would you estimate the price ranges in the adjacent subdivision we're talking about?
I, I wouldn't want to...
Is it an older subdivision?
It's not, I mean, it's been built within the last decade or so, I would say, so I, I wouldn't hesitate to, I mean, it's, it's nice, a nice R20 OSC subdivision, and well-appointed and taken care of, and I think we'll be very consistent with that, and we've taken our lead, and, you know, just pushing that price point even further.
So compatible?
Very.
Have you a question, Tony?
I was just going to add something there for, for Judy, I was sitting here looking on my, on my beautiful little machine that I have, the homes next door seem to be about the same, looking at Tax Assessor's website, they're in the high threes and up to the mid fours, so not uncomparable to, to what they're talking about.
Would you be agreeable to 50% of the homes being over a certain size, larger than 2,200, make the neighbors feel more comfortable?
If we could, I mean, you certainly, if you want to make it, we could craft a stipulation like that, that would 50% of them have to be over 2,500 square feet?
Could we go 2,800?
I mean, I'd rather not...
I don't know what their floor plans are.
Yeah, well, I'd rather not from a zoning standpoint, go, again, they're, just because you're, you're, at that point, you're starting to dictate market from a zoning standpoint, I just would hate to push it, we can dictate the quality of the homes, we can dictate that those minimum floors will be met, we can dictate that the materials and the architectural approval will occur with the district commissioners, so that we can be assured that the architecture will be, you know, well-appointed and a, and a good subdivision, that's what this is, this is proposed to be, so, I just, I hesitate to go that far with it.
Right. Tell you what, I'll leave that for you to hopefully look at in the next couple of weeks.
Sure.
And maybe you can address, you know, you can talk to the developer and see what their floor plans are and all of those kinds of things, and see if there's something that you can add to make the residents feel a little bit more comfortable as far as sizes, but, you know, they're going to, if they're going to sell in the 375-plus range, they're going to have to be larger, most of them than 2,200 square foot anyway.
There's no question about it, again, that's just a floor case.
Right.
You know, bottom falls out.
Exactly, so, okay, is there, anybody else have questions for Kevin? Okay. With that, I am going to go ahead and make a motion that we recommend approval of Z70 subject to all the following: all staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict, all stipulations in the letter from Kevin Moore dated November 25, 2020, not otherwise in conflict, district commissioner to approve all elevations, all front elevations to have at least 50% brick or stacked stone, all other siding material to be cement-based products, so that would be like a hardy board, not vinyl, all garages to remain available for parking of vehicles with only incidental storage that does not interfere with parking of vehicles, garages not to be converted to other uses, no more than 10% of the homes to be rented at any time, a 10-foot landscape buffer along Gayden Road for the purpose of screening backyards from the view of Gayden Road, the HOA to maintain the buffer, and that would be my motion. Okay. I think Judy beat you to it, Alice, so I'll take her second. Second from Judy, any further discussion? And with all that, I'll call the question, all in favor, and that carries five to zero. Okay, thank you. And, you know, for the neighbors, feel free to contact the attorney and get a copy of a stipulation letter, which specifies more things the subdivision's going to have, and, and then the Board of Commissioners will make the final decision on December 15. Okay, John, what's next?
Okay, next one is rezoning case Z71 of 2020, David Pearson Communities Incorporated, they are requesting a rezoning from R30 to RA6 for a single-family residential subdivision in landlots 736 and 777 of the 16th District. The property is located at the terminus of Ross Road, northwest of Sandy Plains Road. The African representative is present, earlier, there's one person here opposed to this rezoning case, and it looks like there is no one here virtually opposed to it, so I would ask the opposition to come forward to be sworn in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commissioners, I'm Kevin Moore here, on behalf of David Pearson Communities in this application for rezoning. This property is located at the very end of Ross Road, it is a property which is just over eight acres, 8.2 acres, just off of Ross Road, for your information, Ross Road, you know, like I said, term, dead ends into this property, and then a very short distance comes out onto Sandy Plains at an intersection where it is signalized intersection with Sandy Plains. What we are proposing is rezoning to the RA6 category for development of this property, really is phase two of a development, a proposed development on, which has been already approved, phase one, which fronts on Sandy Plains Road, and you can see, and the reason I wanted you to see this GIS is so you can kind of see how all these pieces fit together, and especially, there've been some questions from some folks that I have fielded from, based on our letters, about exactly where this property was located, because unless you have gone to this place on the earth, you, you don't really realize where it is and how everything fits together. But you can see on your GIS aerial, the RA6 existing zone property, that's phase one, that was approved in 2019, based on a court-ordered settlement and mediation and approved by the Board of Commissioners, that was approved and rezoned to the RA6 zoning category. All along during the conversations that had occurred with surrounding subdivisions, including Briarwood and Eastbrook, which is the one adjacent that's zoned RA4, we'd always had this, you know, is there, is there ever going to be acquisition of this rear tract? We didn't have it under contract at that point in time, and eventually, we're able to, but it was always assumed that it would be so much better, and we'll show you in a minute, if we could acquire that property because it gave us access to Ross Road and the traffic light, and make the overall project that much better by having two full access, having two access points, one of which is a controlled traffic light, and that that would make things a lot better. So this was not unexpected for those that have been involved in those conversations previously. And what you can see also is where this property is located, is it just does hit the rear of the Eastbrook subdivision, which is zoned RA4, you have a large PRD, that's St. Charles Square subdivision to the left, it's not adjacent to St. Charles, and I want to make sure that I got a question about that at one point in time, this property's not adjacent to St. Charles, and then you see the city of Marietta there at the bottom, which is actually Briarwood, and these are all similarly density-type subdivisions, including the suburban condominium across Sandy Plains, RA5s, SCs, RA4s, and PRDs in the city of Marietta and Cobb County. So now, switching to the site plan itself, and I want to show you how this all fits back together, what we're, what we're seeing here is on the right-hand side, that's Sandy Plains Road, this doesn't even go so far as to show you where it intersects with Ross Road, but if you'll see, this tract to the rear, just over eight acres, you see that where Ross Road has pointed out, it terminates or dead ends into this property, that will then be a full access on Ross Road out to the traffic light, you also see how we're connecting that to phase one, so this literally is simply phase two of the exact same type of development that was approved in 2019. The very idea here is simply to take all of the conditions that were approved as part of phase one, and they are now put in place through our letter and this site plan for phase two, and to do so in the exact same manner, that's kind of what was anticipated and expected if we were able to acquire this property, and that's why we have done this. Please note, by stipulation and by discussion and design, this is age-targeted homes, that's why you see them in this type of layout. I think it's also important, because I think th, this commission did not get a chance to, to, to review phase one, you did as part of a zoning application at the time, but ultimately, was determined as a, a settlement by the Board of Commissioners. This is proposed for RA6, there are variances, but that's because they're detached homes, and our discussions, we had proposed for phase one, both attached RA6 layout and a detached RA6 layout. The attached RA6 layout had no variances, according to the RA6 code. Once you detach them, though, with the exact same number, you do create some variances because of the development standards or, or standards in that ordinance, and in our discussions with Briarwood and with Eastbrook, and with the Board of Commissioners, it was believed that a detached community was much, much preferred from a price point and just an overall look, and so the variances were granted at phase one for that purpose only, it's not, doesn't do anything that we can't do with attached, it just allows us to detach them, and so that's the reason you have the variances present, and I just wanted to explain where that came from, and we brought that same style to phase two, which is why we have it this way. We do have a host of stipulations that are represented in our November 25th letter, these are stipulations that were brought over and applicable to this tract from phase one, so they mirror that in language identically, and that's intentional from that standpoint. We do have an access on Sandy Plains, that's where the access was approved for phase one, that access, please note, there is a left-hand turn lane in Sandy Plains that's already in existence for this property, it's in existence on Sandy Plains. We do have an access there, though, please understand, the left turns out of this subdivision are restricted, there, you can't turn left out of here, is off, off onto Sandy Plains, that's where there's site distance issues and creates some, some conflict there. It is right in, right out, and left in, so just to, to give you kind of how that actually will lay out from an engineering standpoint. But really importantly, and we think the overall importance of this project and why it helps so much, is because now, we have direct access to the traffic light at Ross Road in Sandy Plains, that's a easily traversed access point, it's not very far, there's nothing else on Ross Road till you get to that traffic light, where you have commercial uses that are in the city of Marietta. We will be required to do some upgrades to Ross Road for the county portion of that, so that it can handle this, and what we will end up having is a good number of these, most of these folks that will live here, will utilize that, that access because of the traffic light, if they're going to go north on Sandy Plains. This was supported by staff and a recommendation for approval by all the various departments, and we respect the request that you follow staff's recommendation, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but we think this is a very consistent rezoning and is very intentional with what was approved already by the Board of Commissioners in 2019 for phase one. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Now we'll hear from the opposition.
If it's okay with you, I'm going to leave my mask on because I'm immune compromised.
Yep, absolutely, and feel free if you want to wipe any of the surfaces, there's some wipes there in that.
Okay. I'm a resident of St. Charles Square, so the subdivision that backs up to where this subdivision is being built, and there's a couple...
Let me interrupt you for a second, I don't think you gave us your name for that.
Oh, Lorraine Wood.
Lorraine Wood.
So a couple of things I, I want to point out, I know exactly where this is, obviously, because I live there, the property adjacent to it has been deemed protected wetlands, and the property owners receive a tax credit for not developing the property. That creek that's going through there, that is Noonday Creek, that's protected wetlands, and at the bottom of our subdivision of Almontres, they piped New Day Creek across underneath Kincaid Road to, to, I guess when they built the subdivision, that occurred, that piping and that congestion there has, it floods, every time there's major water problems, there's flooding there. So we're concerned about the density of the subdivision being too tight and that the runoff might be too great, so we're, we would like for them to increase a buffer between where they're building now to the, the land to the left of them, to protect Noonday Creek. The other thing I wanted to point out, there's multiple, this is a 55 and up community, is it not? There are multiple 55 and up communities up and down Sandy Plains Road, to the point we're starting to look like the villages. They bring no tax revenue, they don't support the schools, so there's, if, on Sandy Plains Road alone, they just approved one at Ebenezer and Sandy Plains Road, I don't know how many units are going in there, a couple hundred, I think, and there's another 55 and up community that was just completed on Piedmont Road, so they're adding all these communities, and they don't really bring value to single-family homeowners like myself, and they don't support the school, because eventually, if it's all 55 and up, we're not going to have kids going to... not going to have kids going to Kincaid Elementary and Simpson and Spry Berry High School, therefore so forth and so on. So I understand that they are going to develop the land. I would ask that they reconsider 55 and up, and I would ask that they increase the buffer between where they're building to the left, where that protected wetlands are.
Okay. Anything else? That's it? Okay, any other speakers? I think that's it. So with that, I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing, and it's back to this board, and Judy's handling this case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a little bit confusing in the beginning, but then it makes sense. This was a, the first portion of it, the one that's on the Sandy Plains Road, was a court case, and it was settled last year, which is the RA-6 that Tim is pointing to now. And that was the entrance originally, the one that Kevin was talking about. So that was the entrance. That's not before us because that's already been settled. This is the second portion of it, which is at a dead-in road. Ross Road just sort of dead ends into this property. It's the concept, and the Ross Road is actually an excellent way for all of them to come out because there's a traffic light right down here at Sandy Plains and Ross. So combining the two parcels of the land, when it's eventually all developed, will make it a more easy transition to get in and out with the traffic light there at Ross Road. The homes are in a farm-style, which I think is sort of unique. It is condo concept, condominium concept. And they will have the bedrooms on the first floor. Kevin, you shake my head if I'm not saying this right. The masters will be on the first floor. Thus, it's targeted for 55 and older. Doesn't mean that it's restricted to 55 and older. It's just targeted as a 55 and older. They will pay school taxes for the, until they're 62. So we've already, we've had this conversation. GALT has an excellent thing on the, about the taxes and the issues of schoolchildren. But we pay taxes long after our kids have graduated into the school system, so that's not really going to have an impact on the schools. And since they're targeted, they could have somebody younger than 55. And I hate to think that as I'm getting older, that somebody's going to try to put me in a nursing home just because I'm getting older. We want to be in residential areas, too. The creek, Carl, let me get Carl on the, Carl, are you there? Hello, Carl?
Yeah, hello, yes, I'm here.
Carl, there were some comments made about the Noonday Creek down there, additional buffers. Are we going to require anything unusual there other than your normal buffers and setbacks that we have for Noonday?
No, the buffers would have to be what they are for Noonday. And I think that's 50 feet. I'll have to see if it's an increased area, but other than the standard stuff, no, we wouldn't be requiring any increased buffers.
Okay. Do you see any kind of problems that you'd be having with, I know they haven't done the formal hydrology study, but any problems that we cannot handle?
Nothing from the capacity issues, or they would have to evaluate through normal plan review, the downstream impacts. So no, nothing right now.
Okay, all right, thank you. So you don't, the question was, I believe she asked that additional buffers be required. At this time, do you think that's going to be needed?
Right now, we've got 50-foot buffers indicated, I think. And they've got the detention pond just outside that 50-foot shown. It's where they would put the detention pond. So the water will be controlled from that pond into the buffered area.
Okay, all right, so you're confident on that part, then?
Right, yes.
Thank you, Carl. Is Amy up there somewhere in space?
Amy, D O T.
Amy, in the D O T comments, the access to Ross Road, they would have to bring that up to certain standards, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, I mean, their access road needs to be up to residential standard.
And does D O T have a problem with the access with Ross Road? I'm not getting into the access on Sandy Plains because it was in another, it was in a court case. So, but D O T, does D O T think adding Ross Road would make it easier to get in and out of the combined subdivision?
Certainly, since, I mean, it's been mentioned several times. It accesses a traffic signal, so that would definitely help as far as access goes. So the recommendation that we have as far as Ross Road goes, improving from the proposed advantage to the City of Marietta boundary line, because that roadway from our evaluation doesn't appear substantial.
Okay, thank you, Amy.
No problem.
So those were my comments and comments from the staff. Does anyone else have any comments?
Question for Kevin, please. Thank you. There may actually be a couple of questions. Could you comment on any fire safety aspects of these units?
Only that they will meet the fire safety code.
Do you know what the exterior of the units is going to be?
Exterior of the units, these are, yeah, they're brick, stone, hardy plank-type siding, cedar shake. Even the cedar shakes also cementitious siding types, you know, it's made out of hardy plank or it was really cement siding is what the cedar shake is made out of, and those types of materials.
And then the one variance that concerned me was just the reducing the minimum width between the dwellings, it's variance four, from 15 feet to five feet. Is that necessary to achieve the density?
It's necessary to achieve the layout that's being proposed, and it's consistent with the same variances that were granted in Phase One. Again, we just modeled it intentionally and specifically after the exact same things that were approved as Phase One.
But you're telling me at least these, my concern here is fire safety.
Sure.
You're telling me all the siding is going to be stone, brick, or cement-based? Is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And I can't speak to the fire code, but I believe these would, will probably have to be sprinkled, but I'm not sure about that.
They do, they do. I'll address that in just a minute.
Yeah, I think they do, but I don't want to speak out of turn. When we get to fire code, I just do what the fire marshal tells me to.
I'll jump in, just a couple of quick questions for you, Kevin. How many units are in Phase One?
In Phase One, there are 41.
Okay, so we're looking at 90 units overall.
Correct.
And what does that allow you to add as amenities that wouldn't have been able to be done just in Phase One?
It allows you to add a better, have a better amenity than you would have with Phase One, so that's what's happened. Yeah, but it's just a more expansive amenity. In the Phase One plan that was ultimately approved, it was a more limited amenity.
Okay, so does this have like a full clubhouse now?
This has a clubhouse and pool, correct.
Okay, so, and normally, for the people out there, we normally hit around a 100-unit roughly before you start getting those amenities. And to me, those are important for, I guess this isn't technically age-restricted, but for the community to have those meeting places and that, it forms a better community. So I think that's, and obviously, the traffic light access, you know, provides far better access as well, so.
Yes.
Those are my comments.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask, Kevin, thank you. I'm going to ask the fire marshal come up.
Okay, sure, thank you.
Make sure that we're correct on our... You, yes. I can't remember his name. Mary's usually here. This is not Mary.
Josh Davis, Cobb County Fire. I'm sorry, maybe that question.
No, I'm just saying, this is not, I'm used to Mary, and this is not Mary.
Oh, yeah, she's on vacation this week, so.
All right. So the question came up about the units being sprinkled. If they were the certain distance, do y'all require that they be sprinkled?
I believe, I don't remember, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I think it's 20 feet. If it's less than 20 feet, it has to be sprinkled for the development standards, yes.
Yeah, I think that we had discussed that at our work session, and I think they do have to be sprinkled, but you would be handling that during the plan review process, is that correct?
It is correct, yes.
Oh, okay. So I think they would be on notice that there's a potential that they might have to be sprinkled, and they'd have to proceed as directed by y'all.
Yep.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Judy, I think that was in regards to if there was just one entrance to the subdivision.
Yeah, it's also in regards to how close they are.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Any other questions from anyone not prepared to make a motion?
Go ahead, Judy.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion that we approve this to the site plan as presented, that it be marketed for 55 and older. The letter from Kevin Moore dated October the 25th, 2020. The units would be detached. That it would be subject to zoning comments and recommendation by staff. I don't think I'm leaving out anything. And special emphasis be placed on the stream buffer for any additional buffering that might be required. I think that does everything. So that would be my motion.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, we'll go with Alice. You both raised your hand at the same time. Any further discussion? Yeah, I'm just concerned, there's no requirement here as a stipulation that these be sprinkled, so.
I'm not going to require them because at the plan review process, he will be at the plan review process, and that will be determined at the plan review process. If they're too close, then they will have to be sprinkled. If they space them for enough part, they won't have. So it's a decision that the fire marshal is capable of making at the plan review process.
And one of the other thing is, I know the building code, they're talking about going down to two and a half feet. When you get there, they have to, I believe, firewall the units and everything because you're too close together. That's all in the building codes.
There's three feet, actually, it's three feet you have to do the firewall.
Yeah, so.
Shake your head if I'm wrong. He's shaking his.
He shook his head, you're wrong. He shook his head, yes.
Yes, he did. I used to do plan review.
I don't see, with all these new state requirements and that, I wouldn't think it would have to be. Do you want to just state that it has to be sprinkled?
Well, I don't want to state it has to be sprinkled if we get in there and it doesn't have to be.
Right.
You know, that's a requirement of the fire, and they certainly will be in the plan review process and will state it, and they can't get building permits unless they sprinkle it.
Great. Okay, well, my objection then would just simply be that, and it may be just simply my ignorance of our current fire code, but I would have a concern with variance request four regarding reduction of the minimum feet between dwellings from 15 to five, if they're not sprinkled units. If the units end up being sprinkled, my objection is substantially obviated because the safety concern of the residents would be severely diminished. And I know, I know from past cases, the fire code and the building codes are pretty strict on this stuff, so.
Very strict.
I don't feel like I have to make a judgment on top of that.
No, I don't think I have to try to override what the fire department, they're much more suited and better qualified to make the call than I would be. So that would be motion unscheduled.
Okay, so with that, any further comments? Okay, we'll call the question all in favor. And all opposed. Okay, so that carries 41 with Fred opposed.
What do we got to do now?
Okay, with that, I think that completes the, all the zoning cases, and we just have a little bit of cleanup on other stuff, right, John? Okay.
Yes, you need to adopt your resolution for next year's Planning Commission zoning hearing dates.
Okay, and do we have a written resolution, or do we just? On here?
Or do we do the calendar?
I don't think I have the actual resolution in front of me. Here comes our trustee clerk to get us straight.
Somebody needs to. Friends and I don't know if it's not sprinkled, so.
Okay. Okay, I guess since I have it in front of me, I'll make the motion that we adopt the resolution titled Cobb County Planning Commission Resolution for Establishment of Dates, Times, and Places of the PC zoning hearings for 2021.
Second.
Okay, and a second from Judy. Is there any further discussion on that? We've discussed them all, all in favor. That's a five to zero carries. Okay, and now we have some minutes to adopt.
And I make a motion we approve the minutes for the November 12th and special call meeting on November the 23rd as presented.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, second from Alice. All those in favor? Okay, those are adopted with the motion five to zero in favor. With that, do we have any other business? Okay, well, adjourn the meeting.